The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the November 3rd, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at nine o'clock a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
Thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniformed meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board is required to maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Great to see you today. Just to begin our meeting, as a reminder, we moved Goal One to today. So today, we are going to roll back through our updates from our strategic plan. We will include as part of these updates what the Board has recently approved to our five-year plan, some of those metrics and goals you will see included. But we will start, of course, with Goal One, which is the core of our work, our student outcomes. We will begin the presentations today from the team who's here, looking at what those measurable outcomes are to date, followed by updates on progress, on strategies to increase our outcomes. Following those two updates to the strategic plan, Goals One and Two, we will have a brief introduction by Mr. Stephen Ayers of our timeline, proposed timeline, for looking at our localized overcrowding in our southwest area of the county. So he will just provide an overview of what that process will look like moving forward. And that concludes my briefing. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I believe that means Goal One and Ms. Talbert Irving is up. And thank you to the team for your patience. I know this item was on the last work session agenda, and that ran a little lengthy for us, so thank you for coming back today. Good morning.
So, good morning. Good morning, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Attorney Powers, Superintendent Gullett, and Mrs. Martinez Lopez. Marion County Public School continues to be committed to our strategic plan. The district's strategic plan is a living document examining qualitative and quantitative data with specific actionable and measurable outcomes. The plan outlines the goals and strategies that serve as the North Star for the district and ensures our return on investment. As a refresher, five pillars serve as our goals. Goal One, student success. Goal Two, safe and positive learning and working environment. Goal Three, talent management. Goal Four, fiscal and operational efficiency. Goal Five, community engagement and communications. Today, we will review Goal One, which is student success, and Goal Two, a safe and positive learning and working environment. I will now turn it over to the team to give an update on our progress for Goal One and Goal Two.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Mr. Whitehouse.
So, we will start off this morning by looking at the outcome metrics for this goal. And you'll note down there that we have the updated outcome metrics that I shared with you at a previous board meeting. We added in the addition of looking at proficiency in each of our subject areas, not just learning gains, and then also added in our acceleration scores and graduation rates. So, the left column there you'll see is the baseline that was provided from the 2021 school year, our learning targets for each of those outcome metrics. And then the far-right column there that's highlighted in blue for you, those are the outcomes from the end of the 2122 school year. That's our data as of last summer, last May, spring results. And those are provided to us by the state of Florida on our district report card. So you'll note there are some modest gains there in our learning gains for ELA and math in 2022. However, keep in mind that this year, because we've shifted assessments, there will be no learning gains this school year. We will only be looking at proficiency for 2023 when we report this data the next time around. Also note that when we look at the acceleration results and graduation results for last year, that is lagging data. So that's actually the class of 2021's graduation rate and acceleration rate. We won't have the class of 2022 until usually about January, after the state has gone through all of our Survey Five data, which we just finished reporting to them. So this gives you just a quick update of where we are with each of those metrics moving towards our eventual target for 2026.
Good morning. I'm going to start by talking about Strategy A, which relates to Goal One. Strengthen Core One, Core Instruction Tier One with an emphasis on literacy. Some of the things that we've already accomplished in our district, we submitted our K-12 literacy plan to Just Reads Florida, which included the establishment of a district literacy committee as well as school-based literacy committees. We continue to provide training on the benchmarks for excellent student thinking, which are the new standards for Florida in ELA and math. We began offering trainings in the spring, throughout the summer, the week before school started, and those trainings are ongoing for teachers throughout our district. The professional leading and learning department has created a tool with an instructional framework, which outlines what highly effective teaching looks like. Those were distributed to all schools. The administrators have had training on that, and we continue to tie all of our professional development trainings back to that instructional framework, and school teams utilize that framework in collaborative planning. The elementary curriculum department created lesson plans for teachers in grades two through five. Those are embedded in our curriculum maps and are available to all elementary teachers in grades two through five. We have several program specialists in the elementary curriculum department who write our curriculum maps, and they are currently providing targeted supports to about nine schools. Those schools were selected based on data in ELA, math, or science, and that includes transformation schools and non-transformation schools. They push out three days a week, and they assist school teams with helping with, train new teachers, they help with collaborative planning, they do side-by-side coaching in classrooms. We also have several administrators who participate in NISSL, which is the National Institute of School Leaders. One cohort of administrators completed. The second cohort is completing the program today, and we have a third cohort in progress. And this program strengthens instruction by preparing school leaders to create and lead high-performing organizations and improve student outcomes. So it really does trickle all the way down to the students so that we can see our student achievement increase.
So, the work and support in schools led by district teams as well as area superintendents focuses a great deal on strengthening that core instruction. Schools receive specific supports based on a variety of data, which includes student achievement data. So we look at the whole school to determine what the very specific needs of a school are and then provide that assistance. So this means that some schools receive more frequent support. A hundred percent of our schools engage in what we call an instructional review, and this is a process where we review student achievement data, we collect instructional trend data, and then based on those data points, area superintendents and school leadership teams create a very specific action plan for that school in response to that data. So, seven schools out of our district receive one instructional review a year, five schools receive two instructional reviews in a year, and 31 schools have an instructional review three times a year. Area superintendents look at all of this data, and in our bi-weekly meetings, we discuss the top instructional trends that we see. And the two large areas that we're really focused on in providing supports to our schools is ensuring that instruction in the classroom that is provided is aligned to our new benchmarks, as well as ensuring that student tasks are also aligned to the new benchmarks. So those are the two top trends that we see right now. Additionally, area superintendents progress monitor of these schools based on their action plans. And so, because a hundred percent of our schools develop those action plans thus far, we've been able to progress monitor 32 schools, and 18 of those schools are already showing progress based on their action plans.
All right. Strategy B is to build systems to support data-driven instructions. We have a multi-tiered system of supports that we use in our school system to move students throughout interventions. We had a committee who met in the spring to look at our data and evaluate past programs that we were using for interventions. And as a result of that committee meeting, new research-based targeted interventions were selected to close gaps and improve students' student performance. Students are moved throughout interventions based on all different types of data that is analyzed throughout the school year. School Pathways and Assessment has created benchmark assessments so that school teams can assess their students on each of the benchmarks, the state benchmarks, as well as district progress monitoring assessments. In addition to those summative assessments, our teachers are using formative assessment data, and they analyze that in their collaborative planning meetings as well. So what that means is throughout the course of any lesson, a 90-minute reading lesson or a 60-minute math lesson, teachers are using strategies to monitor the learning throughout the lesson, and they're taking notes. And then during collaborative planning sessions, they're looking at that data, including those student work samples, to determine their next steps for instruction.
To continue with Strategy B, after district and state progress monitoring, we hold regular data meetings with principals and their teams as area superintendents. During these meetings, we review data and help develop action plans to improve our student outcomes at our schools. One hundred percent of our instructional reviews include a Step Four review of all of the data components. All of our schools also report data monthly to area superintendents through a progress monitoring tool. This tool has schools create action steps with their school-based teams to address the data in their schools. In addition, all of our principal meetings that happen monthly, as well as our assistant principal meetings, focus on professional development with data analysis and how to read those various data reports in conjunction with our Student Pathways and Assessment Department.
All right. I think it's worth noting, as we talk about data-driven instruction, that one of the steps we made this year was to also streamline the assessments that we're using in our district. A lot of that is based on the change in state assessments this year, that we're now offering three state assessments instead of one, which gives us more progress monitoring data from the state level. So we've made an effort to streamline our district assessments and have been able to reduce our testing minutes, especially at the elementary level, on what was approved in September by the Board on our unified assessment calendar for the state. We have, on average, a 12% reduction in testing time, which then leads to more opportunity for instructional time in the classroom. So with our data-driven instruction, one of the things that we're working to roll out is our new data dashboard, which we're really excited about. We are currently in Phase One review of that data dashboard. Some of the key elements of that that I want to highlight are enrollment dashboards that help us look at not only admissions but withdrawals of students, where those trends are, where we're seeing larger numbers of enrollments or withdrawals, and what the reasons are. Attendance, which we had a good discussion about attendance at the last work session, talking about the strategic plan. And the data dashboard will not only allow us to look at our average daily attendance rate at each of our schools and across the district, but also tracking chronic absenteeism and students who are approaching chronic absenteeism so we can intervene earlier with those students. And also geospatial data reporting on the data dashboard, which actually places students who are chronically absent on a map, so we can zoom in and actually identify when there are neighborhoods or areas that have high frequency of students who are chronically absent and do some community outreach in those areas based on that data reporting. So we've got some great new features that are coming out. Phase Two, once we get there very soon, will include some predictive analytics in that data dashboard. And right now, we are on pace to be able to start our rollout of this semester, too, with our district and school-level leaders, and then be able to roll that down further to our instructional staff and give them more data reports that are easier to access without them having to push a whole lot of buttons. The answers to the questions are right in front of them, and they'll be able to take that data and then make some informed decisions based off of that.
Chair? Are we asking questions now? May we? Or...
We were trying to go through the whole presentation.
And then backtrack into it? All right.
We will now transition to Strategy C, which is engaging all students in rigorous grade-level content through differentiated instruction. Our goal is to strengthen Tier One instruction across our district. Here's just a few ways that we have already addressed this goal. We have provided a professional development opportunity plan for both our UDL, which is Universal Design for Learning, and English-language learners to support our paraprofessionals and our teachers teaching our students. We have also developed a co-teaching delivery model that is to replace the self-contained units at 10 of the schools. We have also written a $620,000 grant to the state to improve our, to enhance our science and math technology opportunities on our campuses. We have developed a partnership with the Aldrin Foundation, and with that partnership, we are excited that we will have, we have requested, and it's coming our way, we're going to have Moon Maps, and we're going to house our Moon Maps at our Silver River Museum for all of our students to take part of and have adventurous lesson planning to go along with it. So those are a few ways that we have already addressed Strategy C.
Okay. To continue with Strategy C, the training for best benchmarks has been ongoing for our administrators and instructional staff. We offer virtual and in-person options of professional learning for our staff. Administrators receive training and support on components of rigorous instruction through our monthly principal and assistant principal meetings. All of our instructional reviews that area superintendents facilitate include job-embedded opportunities to help know and understand those best ELA and math benchmarks and what those look like and sound like in our classrooms. All of our schools are providing an opportunity for collaborative planning time for teachers to be able to help plan and implement those Tier One instructional content lessons for ELA and math. In addition, all of our schools offer an additional collaborative planning time after school for an additional hour if they would like that opportunity.
All right. Good morning. Our next strategy is Strategy D, which is to expand access to high-quality early childhood opportunities and to strengthen our kindergarten readiness. We're doing that in a number of ways. One of the ways that we are increasing those opportunities is with the expansion of our pre-K programs. Beginning with the 212022 school year, voluntary pre-kindergarten, or VPK, programs expanded to all of our elementary schools. We currently have 42 VPK units at 31 elementary school sites. Another way that we are increasing those opportunities and strengthening our readiness is with the opening of Fordham Early Learning Academy. This has been a wonderful opportunity in our community this year for VPK students and kindergarten students. Excuse me. We currently have 47 students in this program with plans to expand. We know that there is quite a need in our community for high-quality early childhood that is preparing our students for kindergarten. So next year, our intention is to expand our VPK units at Fordham Early Learning Academy, to grow our kindergarten program, to expand to include first-grade classrooms, and I am currently working very closely with DCF and meeting those requirements to explore adding a three-year-old program to that facility as well. And finally, another way that we strengthen our kindergarten readiness is through the curriculum that we are using. New curriculum was purchased for all VPK programs, along with accompanying professional development. During the 2021-2022 school year, a new curriculum called Frog Street was purchased for all early learning classrooms. That included VPK and pre-K ESC. It is a comprehensive curriculum covering 10 domains, around nine themes, and it does a nice integration of literacy, math, science, and social studies. Last summer, we offered differentiated professional development for our new users to the program and for our advanced users. And why this is so helpful is it is allowing our early learning teachers to be able to maximize their resources this year as they plan for whole and small group instruction for our students.
Good morning. In regards to Strategy E and supporting our students' readiness and success in post-secondary opportunities, in regards to employment, we are in the final stages of a partnership with Optimum RV to give students the opportunities at RV Tech One certification. We're also in the final stages of partnerships with the CEP Equine Initiative to give students opportunities in the equine industry as well. For employment, we have implemented the Score Network, which just went live for our students a couple of weeks ago. The Score College Network allows students to be able to build their own profile. It allows them to build a resume template to explore and follow and compare up to four different college and university programs at one time, as well as allowing them to transfer information onto a college application much easier than it has been in the past. For enlistment, currently, we have Air Force at Bellevue High School, Dunellen High School, Forest High School, and North Marion High School. We have Army at Lake Weir High School and Westport High School, and Navy at Vanguard High School. These programs invite all the branches of the military to their campuses to present enlistment opportunities to juniors and seniors. Trips are scheduled and made to different military bases. Guest speakers are brought in to discuss experiences and opportunities in the military as well. For entrepreneurship, if you haven't had an opportunity to visit Bellevue High School's ViStar Bank, this provides students with real-world experiences for students to learn aspects of the banking world to explore this career. And Forest High School continues to build its entrepreneurship programs to provide students opportunities to explore business ventures.
Wrapping up Strategy E, we've made a lot of progress this year in expanding access to a lot of our advanced coursework and CTE programs across the district. We started off by beginning a comprehensive needs assessment last year that we're going to continue on each year, which engages a wide variety of stakeholders in looking at the data that we get back from those Career and Technical Education programs, how successful they are, but also looking at the local job needs in our community and our surrounding areas to make sure that we are providing the right courses and meeting those needs and demands. We've opened up several new options for students with advanced placement. We've included two new do-enrollment options for students at Vanguard and at Bellevue High School this year, and this was a good opportunity for those students because they're virtual do-enrollment classes. So we were able to take down that barrier of students that don't have transportation to drive to CF to take classes and offer courses virtually where they actually are sending an instructor one day a week to provide some onsite instruction at Vanguard and at Bellevue, but then also those students finish the rest of the week with virtual classwork. We've also opened up career do-enrollment, as you all are aware, at Marion Technical College this year. We added three programs this year and are looking to expand further next year to offering more programs through Marion Technical College. This gives our students the opportunity to get advanced certifications and be prepared to either walk right out into the workforce upon graduation or certainly continue on to other higher education institutions through articulation agreements. We've also expanded access to our pre-AP courses throughout the district. We now have three middle schools and two high schools that offer pre-AP courses. The goal of those pre-AP classes is to help us to get students better prepared for the AP coursework when they get there in high school. So we offer a pre-AP through English, through world history, through chemistry. It exposes more students to more rigorous academic work, but also gives them the tools and skills that they need so that when they do take those AP classes, they are more successful and be able to improve our pass rates on those exams down the road. We're also piloting a sixth-grade career exploration course at two of our schools, Lake Weir Middle and Liberty Middle, giving all those sixth-grade students an opportunity to really see what types of jobs are out there. You've probably heard the CEP say this, most kids know five jobs, right? What their mom does, what their dad does, policemen, firefighters, nurses, common things we think of, but there's so many careers available in our community that these courses give our students the opportunity to really explore all the different options that are available, and then what types of courses and pathways we offer in our seven high schools to help prepare those students to get the direction they need. And I love this picture that we have on here of this sixth-grade student. She wants to be a future nurse. She's already looked at a program of study that she's interested in, and she may change her mind two more times before she graduates, but the difference is she's now established purpose and relevancy of schoolwork for her. She now has a place she wants to go, a path to get there, and the courses she takes no longer are just random classes in middle and high school. They now become focused work in helping her to be prepared to be a nurse down the road. And that's really the goal of career and technical education. How do we help them gain the most out of their academic learning and build in those soft skills needed so that when they get out into the workforce, they can be successful? And we're also piloting at Hamlet Bowen Elementary this year, a opportunity to expand career and technical education to our elementary schools through Project Lead the Way. So students in fifth-grade classes there are exposed to more STEM learning, project-based So students in fifth-grade classes there are exposed to more STEM learning, project-based learning, but not just the STEM, which STEM is not new, but really being intentional with connecting the learning that they're doing to potential careers down the road. So again, they can also see, hey, if I really like doing this, there are jobs out there that do this on a regular basis that I can get engaged with and help them start getting excited about going to middle school and some of the opportunities that lie before them. We will now turn it over to questions.
Mr. Browning, you have questions?
Yeah, I've got quite a few. Let's see. I would like to just make the recommendation that in the future, every time we come to a sectional change, we have questions. It's so much easier to make them relevant and especially for the folks listening that may not have a real solid background in the plan. My big concern is the idea of the baseline as we started this out and accepting that as a starting point. I would like to explore the idea, or have you all maybe address the idea, of taking an accomplished teacher and consider that perhaps as a model like General Motors with an accomplished dealership, one that really succeeds. And we get out of the idea of this baseline of failure. And we can split this at this point of trying to figure out why we are failing. If we've got a ten-year, it takes about ten years to really fail. And if we have, if we are at half failing, and I look at most of the numbers, some are not at the half level, but half failing is, I need to see, and I think the community and the teachers especially need to see why we're failing. We'll now flip over to the teacher, an exceptional teacher and an exceptional class. Let's just say that they succeed. They are not burdened, drawn into this baseline. Let's just say we have a brand-new third grade or a brand-new kindergarten or a brand-new high school freshman class or senior class. Every one of these, I guarantee you, we have the quality level of teacher. I know if anybody here that was making the presentation was starting out teaching in one of those scenarios in your own class, that you would not accept half failure. And so I'm looking for a serious consideration of a classroom high level of achievement, drive up to management, rather than this over-the-top management approach, trends, failure tied to external groups. I made notes on programs that come in and they go universal. It's so easy to become universal and eliminate the competition of, let's just say in a school, what would you say we have, maybe there's twenty, thirty classrooms, maybe fifty, and if they were competing, and just leave that failure history behind and just go at it. Accomplished teacher goes at it and accomplishes, and I don't think that's unrealistic. And at that point, management, administration can look down and say, wow, look at that, ninety percent passing at that one, not burdened by all that failure. So do we have, are we going in that direction at all where you've got real success and then you say, wow? Instead of going on and getting a group discussion going and, oh, how can we group up more and get more blended in general? How about we go with an A level and everybody try and catch up? And maybe even tie pay to that level, tie the rewards to that level. Does that make some sense? And can you address, I know we have to be doing that. We have to be working with our top people.
Yeah, and that's actually a great strategy that our school has already used to support a lot of our novice teachers. And just as a reminder, we have a lot of new teachers now that come to education with no educational experience whatsoever. And so part of that training process that we provide them is mentor support from expert teachers, but also getting those teachers into those classrooms to be able to watch and observe what expert teaching looks like and start to find those gaps and areas that they can build and enhance their skills. We also have schools that participate in lesson studies, which are opportunities for teachers to come together and design high-quality lessons together and then implement and watch each other as they implement those lessons and give each other feedback to learn and grow from the expertise and experience of the others in the room. So yes, it does happen.
Wow, well, I have quite a number of metaphors, like if we're teaching swimming and half the kids can't swim, we just got to go right back to the side of the pool, bring them back up. I was in the Navy. We would start with some, but we would not, we wouldn't go a week at that level. They would be functioning, they would be up within two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. They would be up at the A level. It's just that simple. And if they weren't, they would be drilled over into a position where they kicked back a week or two and got up to that level. I'm just amazed that we're mired in this level of failure. We're having a big function coming up with a whole lot of top-level leaders, federal, state, and local leaders. And that's the approach I'm going to take with them and to say, hey, why aren't we, if I look out and I see a teacher and that teacher is like you and you're able to nail the ninety percent, then why would we not do that? I just can't get beyond, you would not tolerate. If you were at a teacher level, I'm looking out into the audience, I see people that would be drawn down to that mediocre baseline and like, whoa, we've got to struggle with that. How about no? How about we start with the idea of this outcome that we're looking for and we do it right now? We just do it, go in and clean house. Quite often, when you buy a business or you buy a facility, you just go in and clean it up. You don't start at that baseline and drag that out over a long period of time. You just can't afford to do it. So does that excite you at all, the idea of a teacher that can turn it around and forget the administrative blending into the general sense of fifty percent failure? And then bang, they're rolling. Now everybody else, come on, we'll have them lecture. Come on, catch up. And before you know it, even the laggards are at an eighty or a seventy, in the seventy, you know, I'm sorry, I couldn't give my child to the district to take responsibility for the education if it's going to be at that level. I'm just, there's got to be a breakthrough here. There's got to be a way of doing it. Any thoughts, any of the other presenters? I know you think that way. I know you understand that it ought to be at ninety, and if any one of you grabbed a class, what is it, thirty students? You could have them at that level. You could just do it. I think you can, or tell me that you can. Would some of you like to address that?
Vice Chair.
Certainly, any one of you could address this, but if you don't mind my commenting on this particular point, I do appreciate the thought process, frankly, and I'll liken it to being a part of a student body in a school, walking in and having students in this particular school that I'm not going to call them out by name, but asking questions about things that frankly, some of our schools would never dream that these are the questions being asked. We have too much trash in our bathroom, or the Wi-Fi signal's not strong enough, or the air conditioning isn't cold enough, and I'm like, well, have you been to some of our other schools? The only reason I use that as an illustration is just to say, I'm grateful we have a strategic plan for the first time in this district, that we have a strategic plan. Yes, we're looking at now year two of what this looks like. The baseline started at what the baseline started at. Because we, as a district, are looking at that thirty thousand-foot level for a strategic plan, we have to look at the district as a whole. Does the data get granular beyond that? Absolutely. Do we have individual school data, individual grade-level data? Yes, we see that, and we have seen that regularly. But for the purpose of what we're doing today is to talk directly about district-wide. I completely appreciate the thought process of, we probably do need to see the granular at some point in this kind of conversation, to not just say, this is what our baseline is district-wide, this is what our target is, and this is what we hit last year, but to say, this is what Forest High School is, this is what Dunellen High School is, and take each, you know, Reddick Collier, take each individual school. We get that. I mean, we do get that. But I think that's actually what potentially Mr. Browning is seeing is missing right now in the conversation today, because we do have that data, we do have those grade levels, those teachers that are hitting the mark, out of the park, highly effective.
Chair, if I may.
Mr. Browning, you're going to let her complete her comments because she allowed you to complete yours.
Well, I did not complete mine, sir.
She did, you did complete yours.
And she's addressing my comment.
Go ahead, continue, Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, please refrain.
She's addressing my comment.
Please refrain from speaking. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you. So again, we have that data, we have that information. The interesting thing about a strategic plan, again, for those of us who've conducted strategic plans time and time again in the business world, understand what the thirty thousand-foot level looks like and why you have to look at the entire picture in one metric. Yes, we absolutely want our benchmark to be ninety-five percent, but on a strategic plan, that's a five-year plan, understanding how long it will take us from the baseline of below fifty percent. And frankly, that is real world. Yes, Marion County, your Marion County public schools have not been operating at fifty percent student literacy. We have not. We have not. That is real world, that is real data, that's real truth. So when we have a baseline, it is less than fifty percent, because that's truth. Where we want to go from here is a benchmark that is much higher than that, but probably in five years, isn't going to make the ninety-five percent level. Some of our schools very well may hit that, but as a district, we are graded as a whole. We are certainly graded in parts, and each school receives an individual grade as well, and each teacher receives an individual score from effective to highly effective and beyond or below. So each teacher is graded that way, each school is graded that way, but we are here to talk about the entire district today because this is the district-wide strategic plan and our goal specifically for the district. And so I believe that's what seems to be missing in the conversation today, is the granular that takes us down to that teacher, individual teacher level who is hitting it out of the park. And of course, we have teachers that are hitting it out of the park, or we wouldn't even be at the level we're at right now because we have some classrooms, some schools that struggle more than others, including our charter school that has an F that does count towards our district-wide grade. So that is the whole conversation and the whole picture that we're looking at today, and I think that that potentially is what was missing from the conversation.
Board Member McKee, then Mr. Browning.
Sure.
Board Member McKee, then Mr. Browning.
I have some questions about your presentation, the data, and you may have already said it and maybe I missed it, for your baseline and it has the increase.
Ms. King, can you pull it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now? Okay, sorry about that. I was just needing some clarification on your baseline, the data for the increase, the percent of students that graduate within four years with a standard diploma. Where did you get that baseline?
That comes directly from the state of Florida. That's our graduation rate that's provided to us. We don't calculate that on our own. It's attached to our district grade.
Okay, yeah, because the only thing I was confused about, because you said that we were currently looking at 2021, so when I saw the baseline, I was like, I wonder what that means, because that could be, I don't know.
The baseline there is the class of 2020. So the class of 2020 had an eighty-seven percent graduation rate. When we say that, we mean students that started in that cohort and finished with their standard diploma within four years. We have plenty of students that come back and finish within five years. We have plenty that meet every requirement except for passing maybe the English Language Arts Assessment. They meet that requirement the next year and they get their diploma. But this only captures the percent that graduated within four years in 2020. The 2022 number is actually the class of 2021, and then we'll get this last year's cohort 2022, we'll get their data back from the state in the winter.
And then, okay, thank you. I was just had that question. And then also, on slide 12, you talked about the students. They might have a path that we put them on, you know, to see, like, our student here was a nurse. I was wondering, do we have anything in place that follows our students so we know if what we're doing is effective and, like, how are we following them through this process?
Tracking them through our K-12 system or beyond?
Or actually, I was kind of thinking beyond, like, are we following them to see if it's effective or no?
So we do get data reports back from the state because we don't have access necessarily to be able to track where students enroll in colleges. That comes from a national clearinghouse that then brings that data down to the state, and they give us kind of a high school effectiveness report card that shows the percent of our students the semester after graduation that are either found enrolled in any higher institution or employed, which, again, you've got to be able to track down through social security numbers and things we don't have access to. So we do get to see how many students are gainfully employed or enrolled in another institution, one semester after enrollment, two semesters, even two years after. So we are able to see a little bit. We don't see which students, we don't get that granular in the data, just the percent of them that are actually pursuing education or a job right beyond our K-12 system.
Okay. And I'm just assuming we do track them in K through 12, like.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah, I was like, I thought so, but I was like, well, let me.
Right now, we use the My Career Shines, which we've talked about for a while, but that gives students the opportunity to identify what their E-selection is, and then it maps out through our Career Planning Guide, the steps that they need to take to get there, and the counselors work with them individually to make sure they're trying to get through those goals and achieve whatever it is they're trying to achieve at the end of high school.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have one more question, and then I will be done, and it might be for, I think it's Ms. Riedel that maybe did slide three, for lesson plans for teachers in grades two through five that have been created and embedded in the curriculum maps. Is that optional, that they use the lesson plans, or is it mandatory? I'm just curious.
Yes, so we provided the lesson plans for teachers to use as a resource and a tool, and so they are, they can absolutely use them if they feel comfortable using them or not, but they are encouraged to look and make sure that, you know, the resources that are in there is what they need for their individual classes, because we have classes all over the district that are so very different. So teachers may need to add additional resources to those, but it is a baseline resource or tool for them to use should they choose.
Okay, thank you. And those are my questions for today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Browning.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I'll just make a comment that I was just getting started with my questions, and my comments and questions do not need, nor is any board member entitled to interpret. And thank you for that laugh, young lady. There is no time.
As a volunteer, and I'll say that any, during a work session...
a work session, any board member can comment on any item that is brought up, including if it refers to another member's comments. Because one member makes a comment does not exempt it from conversation, so.
Sir, the interruption, the interruption is the problem. Uh, I was at number one, and then that gets interpreted. Now, that is not proper according to Robert's Rules. Uh, that is not appropriate.
And Mr. Browning, you gave up the floor to, um, individuals in the audience. You asked a question, no response was immediately given, and the chair then selected, um, properly the next participant.
He had given up the floor, sir.
Uh, and when I ask a question, uh, I, the, the individuals are now thinking. Now, if in fact they don't want to answer, I'll go on to my next question.
Sir, respectfully, you asked a question, and the vice chair said, I can answer that question. So her answer, her response was in direct correlation to your question, so you had given up the floor for an answer.
Not to the board, sir. I was talking to the presenters, I was not referring to the board. Thank you very much, sir. I'll, I'll continue if I have.
This is a work session, Mr. Browning, you can't continue with your questions.
If I have.
So please go ahead.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Um, so, presenters, the idea of coming from success, as you term it, on a granular level, where we do have success, either on a classroom or on a school level. Do you have any thoughts on how we might pull that together so that our strategic plan would be in a more, uh, successful, uh, position, say at this time next year? Any thoughts?
Thank you.
Uh, wait, we're, we're, we're having some communication here. If, if there are none, thank you, thank you. Mr. Whitehouse, is there none from the team?
Mr. Browning, Mr. Browning.
Yes, sir. I'm going to my next point.
Respectfully, respectfully, you have heard the entire presentation from those experts in this area. They have given it to you, and now it's almost moving to, not from just a questioning, but it's almost to put our people on, on, uh, put them out there, roll a bus over them. That's not, that's not how we're gonna.
I'm not rolling a bus on anyone.
That's not how we're gonna, that's not how we're gonna conduct this meeting. If you have genuine questions.
Sir, my, my questions are all genuine.
Hold on, sir, you're trying to put people on the spot about something, and obviously, that's not how we, that's not appropriate for this meeting.
Sir, I'm trying to advance the academic, uh, performance of the district.
Not by, not by putting our staff members on the spot.
I'm asking a simple question.
In a public humiliation way. That, we're not gonna do that.
Sir, I think you're badgering and bullying, and it's inappropriate.
Sorry you feel that way, but it won't be done today like that. Attorney Powers, can you weigh in on this?
What I would weigh in to say is that if a member has something that they believe is being, uh, mischaracterized, or something that they wish to, uh, address under Robert's Rules of Order, their response is not capable of being heard until they call a point of order. Without a point of order, it's not cognizable. Once a point of order is called, however, um, the chair has wide discretion to be able to continue forward and choose and select the way in which debate is going to go. I believe that we've probably wound down this particular conversation. Question was asked whether there was any questions. Were there any question, or any response to the questions? Hearing none, then the proper thing to do would be to move on to additional questions that might be had, if there's that from Mr. Browning or any other board member.
Thank you, and that's the position that I'm in. Uh, I will ask, uh, some additional questions. Uh, the, the idea, uh, of a sixth grade, I believe we're missing the boat, and I'd like some thoughts on, starting at the sixth grade, um, that is, that seems so early to select a, a major, especially going to individuals or groups that, uh, might have a vested interest in steering a student to, let's say, the lowest possible manual labor, driving, uh, a forklift, if that's a starting position, or frying a hamburger, let's say, uh, if that's a starting position. Uh, I believe, and I'd like to know if we've considered the idea of starting at grade one or kindergarten and going all the way through, um, uh, twelve, that we actually teach the skills in the educational, reading, writing, and arithmetic that will allow a student and their family to make the right decision, career-wise, job-wise. Uh, it just seems to me that it's a little bit of an indentured servant approach to go at the sixth grade and start steering. I know in college, we didn't know, often it was the second year of college before a major would even be selected, just, just so that it was more valid. Uh, any thoughts on that, sir?
Yes, sir, I, I think you have a mischaracterized understanding of what we do with our career exploration course. So actually, the goal is to get them to explore not only what careers are out there, but what does it take to get into that career? What level of college? How much money do they make? And our focus in career and technical education is to make sure that we are providing career paths to students and industry certifications to students that will lead them to high-skill, high-wage jobs down the road. It doesn't mean that they can't go anywhere else, but our hope is that we want to create those opportunities for those students, and it's not about selecting a major in sixth grade, it's about identifying some opportunities that you might be interested in to pursue so that you're starting to take the right courses that build towards your interest level. So I may decide very early in sixth grade that I have no interest in the medical field whatsoever. I'm not gonna waste my time in high school taking a medical exploration class or anything else related to that field if I already know I'm not interested. On the flip side, this young lady felt she was interested in nursing, so she may like to take some additional science classes to build upon that interest, and she may change her mind three more times, and that's okay. But the idea is helping them start to explore what's out there besides the careers that I already know, so that I can find eventually down the road the right career fit for me and be successful throughout life.
Mr. Whitehouse, can, can we just put this in one word, that we're, we're providing exposure?
Yes, sir.
To these kids?
Absolutely.
Yeah, exposure, that sounds, that sounds, uh, uh, that sounds healthy and it sounds educational, the exposure. The idea of putting them into, and I had heard this, uh, previously, putting them into a, a track or a program that, that led in a certain, uh, uh, direction is a little bit, uh, tagging, uh, that indentured servant kind of an idea, like it limits, uh, rather than expands opportunities. And I'm, I'm, I'm just putting that forward. If it, if it didn't, uh, really succeed, uh, it's just way early. Uh, at sixth grade, you're kinda learning your, you've learned how to read and write, and you're rolling along, uh, uh, you're learning math, you're learning, uh, um, basic fundamentals, and now you really have to dig in and, and get proficient in those so that you can hit high school. So I would just like to keep the door open, and especially not, uh, tag. You, you mentioned the CEP was mentioned, it's a, uh, Chamber of Commerce. I like the idea of maybe coming and making a presentation sometime, a Chamber of Commerce, that's businesses, to say, hey, I wanna sell or, or, uh, sell the ideas on my business, but not give them any kind of an inside, um, opportunity at tagging people early. Uh, agricultural, agriculture the same way, servant type, service type, uh, occupations. I'm a big believer in leaving that door open and then allowing, uh, uh, the choice to be made by the student, by the family, by the community, you know, things like, I see almost nothing happening in the EV world, where these sixth graders, by the time that sixth grader, in six more years, there'll be almost no opportunity in conventional, uh, if they wanted to be a mechanic, spark plugs, oil changes, things like that. There'll be almost none. Another couple of years, and there will be none. At least that's the way that, the, uh, the big thought. So that's, it's the kind of, I'm not indicting, I'm, I'm just saying, wow, you gotta keep it open, and, and we, we wanna be successful, we wanna, we get these kids for twelve years, and we want to, um, wanna do the best job we can to allow them to actualize, uh, as human beings. Thank you, if you have any comments on that, uh, I'd, I'd love to hear them.
Mr. Whitehouse, before you answer that question, um, I'm, I'm just thinking, babe, I'm, I'm having this conversation, and I, I'm not sure if it's still the same, but I can remember when I was in sixth grade at, uh, Osceola Middle School, that one of the things that we did was, um, coming into sixth grade, we were exposed to all of the electives that they had in that school, um, shop, home ec, art, um, whatever it was.
We don't have those anymore.
We don't have those. Uh, but whatever, typing, you know, all those types of, of skill sets to give us the exposure so that at some point, we also took aptitude tests, too, to at some point to get it, to kinda guide us or put us towards our strength. Is this kinda similar to the same, same thing?
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, one of the real pushes that we're trying to focus on in this program is helping our students to see what options are available through Marion County Public Schools and the high school curriculum. And we've got a great opportunity now that we didn't have when I was a student, that we have choice options to go to any high school in our district to pursue the different career paths that they offer. So I may be zoned for, you know, Donnellan High School, but I may be really interested in robotics, and if I don't know that there is a program at Bellevue High School that specializes in robotics automation and design, I'm not gonna know that I should apply to go there. And so we're really helping them to explore what the different career fields are, and then where we offer some of that opportunity for learning so the students can build upon those skills.
So it's mostly opportunity that you're talking about, rather than to take the student and steer them in a direction?
Yeah, we don't, we don't steer them, sir. We let them steer themselves based on their interests and their, their pursuits of what they wanna do after school.
Excellent, excellent. That's, that's very positive. Thank you, sir.
Chair.
Vice, uh, Ms. Thor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and, and thank you, team, um, for your great overview and, and presentation. A couple of things come to my mind. Um, the first one is regarding one, two, one, two, three, four, the fourth bullet down. If it had read, "Students will select a major in sixth grade," I would've paid a lot more attention to the last ten minutes of the conversation going on up here. Um, I'm reminded that very young children, through their imaginative play, they dress up as cowboys, they dress up as nurses and doctors, and, you know, parents ask little kids all the time, what do you wanna be when you grow up? And they have all these ideas, and then they get to school, and hopefully, they begin to get the exposure to the array, the vast array of opportunities to be successful. And, uh, Browning, in my mind, was spot-on when it comes to being nimble and responsive when it comes to the business community and, and innovation and, and how fast things are moving. So I'm very grateful for the partnerships that we've worked very hard to build, um, with our business community, because there's no point preparing kids for something starting in sixth grade that's not even gonna be a thing, you know, when they graduate. Um, it begins in sixth grade, but it certainly doesn't end. Uh, that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and thank you, really, thank you, guys. Um, I was speaking with some teachers last night, and they were telling me how they were doing some of their classrooms, some of their lesson plans, and some of their lesson plans included, um, when, and these were, uh, elementary students, some of their lesson plans or, um, things that, that, uh, that these teachers did, they would change the dynamics of the room. Um, for one day, it would look like a hospital room, and one day, it would look like a bakery, one day, it would look like an assembly line. So it's exposure, that, uh, opportunities to let these kids know that there are many, 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 many choices out there that they can explore. So, um, I, I don't, I don't know how we got down this rabbit hole, um, and why we went that course, but, um, it's never our intent as a, as a school district to pencil any kid into any field that they don't wanna be in. It's always to give them exposure and opportunity. So thank you, guys, so much for your, for your, um, presentation. Any, any public comment?
Chair, I did have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, did everybody get their questions asked? I, I, just a couple of quick questions I wanted to ask. Currently on slide three for us with the strategic plan, because we do have in our plan specifically about showing, um, at least one year of growth, and because the, the state is no longer tracking, uh, the learning gains, are we now gonna be tracking that internally, or is that something that we actually need to adjust in future strategic plans?
Yes, so we may need to adjust that. What we'll have to wait on is the state to actually tell us what the calculation is for a learning game, because they define it. Not to mention, we, not to say we don't track growth in our own way, because we certainly can see, especially when we look at the new state assessments, where students started at Progress Monitoring Assessment One at the beginning of the year, and where they end. Obviously, we want to see gains in, in student success, um, between those areas, but in order to actually define what counts as one year's worth of growth, we'll have to wait for the state next summer to tell us.
Okay, thank you. Um, I also was grateful to hear, Mr. Whitehouse, that you said we currently, this year, have reduced the testing minutes by twelve percent. Do we foresee that there will be additional opportunities for us to reduce that down if, in fact, we and the state start using the same platforms entirely?
Yes, um.
Potentially.
Yes, definitely, the opportunity is there. Um, I, I think we'll have to see the direction the state goes. I mean, this is, you know, their beta year, they've, they've just rolled this out, you know, after a quick decision in the spring, so I think we'll probably end up seeing a little bit more robust reporting system from their assessments, and when we get to that, I think, yes, we have an opportunity.
Okay, great. Um, I also am grateful to hear that we're about to be rolling out these data dashboards, which we have been interested in, and, and we, we saw kind of a sample of that with one of the presentations at the Florida School Word Association a year or so ago, another district doing it, and we were like, how, how do we get that? What, what do we do? So I'm really excited that we're about to get that. My, my question is actually, is that something we're building internally, or is that something that we have outsourced and we have, we have actually used somebody else's proprietary material?
Yeah, so it, it's a little bit of both. So we've partnered with, uh, Who Knew It, which is a part of the Power School Company, um, and so they are doing a lot of the initial design. My team is working with them to really customize what it is we want to see and how we want to see that data reported, so that we get the types of reports that we need on a daily basis, readily accessible, without people having to go hunt for them.
Excellent. Um, and the last things are really just all commentary of what I wanted to mention really quickly. I'm grateful for the universal screening for gifted. I, I know that's something that we've been talking about for a long time, and I know it's piloting, um, with ten schools. I, I am of the belief, and we won't know until we start seeing it, but I'm of the belief that some students' behaviors and participation actually could be tied to their level of exceptional giftedness, as opposed to what we might be classifying it as right now. Uh, I know one particular student, just personally, um, that was a kindergartner that was not, was non-verbal in the classroom, uh, and was actually found to be far exceeding everyone in the classroom and wasn't talking because they didn't believe they needed to be doing what was happening. Uh, that, few and far between, certainly, uh, but sometimes we may be misdiagnosing internally what we think is happening, when actually, I think that gifted assessment is gonna help us immensely. Um, also grateful for all we're doing in VPK. I, I've heard from a kindergarten teacher recently who is acknowledging that what we're requiring kindergarteners to know now is so much more so than when we were in kindergarten. Um, and so if we don't have students coming in prepared for kindergarten, then they're already behind, they're already way behind, frankly. And so while we still want kindergarten to be that nice introduction to elementary school, where they still get to play and dress up and do all the fun things we've kind of talked about today, what those teachers are responsible for and actually required to get those students prepared for first grade is more so than it ever has been before, which means those students have to be much more prepared at three and four than they ever have been before. And so we know the value in that, we know the data shows that, we know, um, how important it is, um, that those students receive that instruction, whether from home or from some type of curriculum that they can receive in a, in a setting of a daycare or a VPK program, um, and so I'm grateful for that. I also wanted to, I mentioned something that Ms. King said, that I think that we have an opportunity to elaborate on. Uh, she was asking about how we track students post-graduation, and from my experience and what I've seen, we don't do that very well. And, and I, I liken it to the university setting. They don't have access, like, anybody who's graduated from college knows, your college finds you because they wanna ask you for money. your college finds you because they want to ask you for money. They want to know what you're doing. They want to know how mu- I mean, they don't want to know how much money you make, but based on the career you've chosen, they might be able to kind of estimate how much you might be able to give them in an alumni donation. And they know how to find you and it's not tracked to a social security number, but they've built a relationship to try to ensure that they're having extensive and elaborate alumni databases. And I think that's an opportunity for us. I don't know where that lands. Maybe it's in community engagement. I'm, I'm not going to throw another thing in Ms. DeBick's, um, department, but I, I'm not certain where that lands. But I think if we even just started this year with this year's senior class, ensuring that we have personal email addresses, per, you know, well, obviously we have their addresses, something to ask them, "Can we stay in touch with you?", where we're actually asking them to allow us to continue to stay in touch, then that gives us that opportunity to continue that dialogue. I remember maybe a decade or so ago, there was a billboard campaign that Mr. Christian ran that was amazing. "We are Marion" and it showed all of these people that are Marion County leaders that have graduated from a Marion County Public School. That was a little more challenging in my opinion for Mr. Christian to do than it should have been because there are probably hundreds and thousands of people that are wonderful leaders in our community and elsewhere that we haven't done a great job of keeping track of. So I think, to Ms. King's point, I think that's a great opportunity for us. I don't know where that lands or who needs to hold on to that. Don't know that it necessarily needs to fall on each school. Um, maybe, maybe not. Uh, but I, I think if we had more extensive alumni databases, that would help us then further track more qualitatively than quantitatively, but what our students actually have become later in life. Um, that's just anecdotal, but, but my feedback on that. And one, um, one more comment, or actually two more comments. We, we talked a lot about kind of the "My Career Shines" concept and, and how those students are choosing based on what their profile says that they already have interest in doing. I'm grateful that we're starting that so early. I know we had conversations about it may be too early, but I'm grateful we're starting that early. I've been mentoring a student who now is postgraduate in a graduate program who's chosen two different jobs that hasn't really found what he loves to do. And, and I keep saying, "Have you taken a Myers-Briggs test? Have you, do you know your DISC profile? Do you know?" And because no one in his high school or college or even postgraduate has ever helped steer him into, "What are you actually programmed to do? Just, you know, what do you actually like to do?" And he hasn't been able to figure that out yet. If we can get that start and that jumpstart for these students sooner rather than later, it will help them guide their pathway. Last comment is personal. I knew when I was a sophomore in high school that I wanted to do something in the communications profession. I knew it. I thought I wanted to be a sports broadcaster. It's what I wanted to do. I went to college to pursue sports broadcasting and it wasn't until my sophomore year of college that I started realizing how much money those people made. If I had known that when I was in high school, I probably would have started the public relations career pathway when I was in college and gotten a much faster start than I have now, all because I didn't get exposure to that kind of information when I was in high school. And so I'm grateful for the work that we're trying to do because I think it's really going to help steer these students in a direction that they can make their own personal choices for what's best for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, thank you. Uh, maybe take a, a little different tact here, uh, and get some, get some feedback. The, in this baseline idea really does bother me. If you take a sixth grader, we've had like five years to bring that student along. Why or how did we get to the point where we're failing? For ex- for example, math, uh, uh, scoring proficiency below, like six out of 10 are failing. How in the world did we get there? If, if we don't know, we're Ford Motor Company, we don't know why the wheels are falling off the trucks. Six out of 10 of the vehicles just don't get to their destination. We got to figure out why that's happening rather than just track the fact that we've got six out of 10 are failing and are not getting where they're going. Somebody, they're going to buy some other product. In this case, they're going to buy some other product. They're not going to buy the public school program. Whether you look at it on the overall, and this isn't throwing anybody under the bus. You guys, this is your profession to figure this out and to bring it to the board and to the community and help us, help us not have numbers like that. I, I can't, I can't stand being tied to a 38% success rate. If, if each person that we pay was to be paid based on their success rate and they were to let 60% of their salary go until they got it, you know, achieved, uh, better results, would that fly? I think we'd be paying attention to it. Any, any thoughts on that?
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brownie.
I, if I may.
Mr. Browning, you, you paused and I'm interjecting. You're going down a lane that is, has nothing to do with this presentation. We're getting ready, we're moving on from that because we're not going to ask our staff that can make conjecture about your educational philosophies or your philosophies on particular issues. What you, you, you've made your statements. You have the right to ask a question, but that's, this is not the forum for that. We're going to move forward. So I'm, I'm respectfully, I'm telling you.
No, sir, I don't accept that.
You don't have to accept it, but we're getting, we're getting ready to move forward. Um, point of order, we're moving forward with this conversation because we have a lengthy, um, work session and we're not to debate your philosophy or how you feel about certain things.
Sir, it's not philosophy. Uh, this is a, we're, we're talking about the success of this district. And we are at four in 10. We are in failure, abject failure. And I'm addressing the failure. Let the man have a chance to take a deep breath and consider his response. At 38% of our students.
What you're asking, Mr. Browning, is outside the scope of this presentation.
Maybe, maybe, sir, and he can say that.
Because we're talking about this, Mr. Whitehouse can tell you, you're, you're asking them questions beyond the scope of this presentation. Let's stick to this presentation, sir, and let's move forward as a board and deal with the issues at hand.
Yes, that's your opinion.
Mr. Whitehouse, thank you, sir, for dealing with that question. Thank you. We're moving forward.
I, I.
Any public comment?
I object severely.
Thank you. Next, we are at, um, Goal Two. Goal Two. Dr. Livinggood.
Good morning, Superintendent Dr. Gullip, Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Ms. Campbell, Board Members, Mrs. King, Ms. Thoreau, and Mr. Browning. Good morning, Mr. Powers and Ms. Martinez Lopez.
Good morning.
Thank you. We have prepared a presentation for you today that will provide updates on outcome metrics and key activities from the strategic plan on Goal Two. The outcome targets for 2026 will ensure that all four strategies of Goal Two are fully implemented, which will help to create a safe and positive learning and working environment for both staff and students. Please note, we also have a scheduled board work session on student discipline and mental health scheduled for February the 2nd, 2023. So I'd like to point your attention to the first, um, strategy. I'm going to address the Strategy 2A. And so on the outcome metrics chart, I'm going to point you to the reducing the number of alternative placements and the reduction of the number of expulsions. You will notice that the baseline is on the first column as we just discussed through Goal One. And then there's a target number and then it shows in that final column where we were for the 21, 22 school year. Our baseline number was calculated based on an average of five years' worth of data. So that is that number. So you will note that baseline for the reduction of the alternative placements, we had 422. Our target in, at the end of 2026 will be 300. Last year, we, there were 519 total alternative placements. Please also note, as mentioned before in previous board work sessions, that our goal is not just to reduce the number if the behavior is still happening in the classroom. We want, this is our target, but our ultimate target is improving behavior so instruction can take place. The number of expulsions, the baseline data start, our average was 107 for the five years' data points. Our target at the end of 2026 will be 70, is 75. Last year, we completed the year with 122 expulsions. We, at this point, as of the November 8th board meeting, those students are included in this number, we have 102 alternative placements for the school year and we have 26 expulsions. We now like to show you some of the things that we are doing to improve our Goal Two for Strategy A. 2A, which is to build the capacity of schools and leaders to implement strategies to provide the safe and positive and supportive learning conditions. We have a strong, um, PBIS and when we say that, that is positive behavior. That's not a program. That is a mindset and that's the work that our student services managers as well as the guidance counselors are doing in the schools to teach positive behavior and teaching the school-wide expectations. We have, um, we have monthly ongoing discipline meetings that are covering, we, the agenda includes speakers from the mental health team to address the, um, the behavior part as well as the academic side, the root cause of why a student is, um, result, why a student is acting a certain way. And so all of that makes up the discipline monthly meetings, which is another strong, um, method of our practice this year in trying to improve these safe conditions for both staff and students. We had a summer workshop with our Cagan Professional Development and all of our student services managers from elementary, middle, and high school were invited. That follow-up is included in all of our ongoing meetings. And those trainings include appropriate structures, appropriate strategies to make sure that all students are, um, being addressed at that level that they are. We, um, also had, and I introduced this over the summer, but we shared that we had a new discipline manual that is in addition to the Student Code of Conduct. The manual is a, a resource guide for all of the student services managers that explains the code of conduct and it gives, um, clear examples and non-examples um, of how they can handle certain situations. So those are some, um, methods that we have already addressed, um, to meet our goals for 2A. We also have a restorative practice. We, we are beginning that implementation. The Train the Trainer model will begin in January and we are using the Institute for Instructional Restorative Practice for that guidance. And they are working, they are helping us, um, train our leadership team and then our leadership team will train the school-based leaders. We also are working hard with the mental health department team to address both sides of our, our tiered, uh, model of PBIS. You may have seen this pyramid before. When we look at this pyramid, we look at two sides of it. There's an academic side and then there's a behavior side. We know that for the most part, 80% of students are in that Tier One, whether it's the academics or it's the behavior side. We know that basic school-wide expectations, basic monitoring, basic guidance will be sufficient to ensure that those students are behaving the way they're expected to do. We also know that Tier Two, which is about 15% of our students, need a little bit more support. So we have, um, processes in place at different schools to address those particular students. They may need a check-in and a checkout, um, person just to check on them each morning to make sure they're having a good day, make sure they close the day out well. Um, that's what we call a check-in and checkout. That's a common Tier Two method to address those students that need just a tad bit more support for behavior management. And then we have Tier Three. Those are our students and that makes up about 5% of students on average. And those students need, um, more intense support for behaviors. And those are created, we create behavior management plans for those students to make sure that all of their needs are addressed. And we have, um, guidance staff and other staff members on the campus that are scheduled to work with those students individually or in small group settings. We're now going to transition to 2B.
Good morning.
Morning.
Strategy 2B is to engage families and community partners to support student achievement, attendance, and social, emotional well-being. To update on our parent partnership. Our parent partnerships are community events to enhance student achievement through professional learning on several topics to support student achievement, attendance, and social, emotional well-being. This is a collaboration with all our departments and our community organizations. Many of our employees present topics on their expertise and community organizations offer different resources. Mrs. Rohr's team assists with bus transportation to transport adults and their children to the, to and from the events. The events are offered throughout the year at various, um, locations. In addition, we have program specialists from federal programs offering several professional learning opportunities to our school advisory councils and chairs and co-chairs to increase site-based community and family engagement by building stakeholders' capacity to use data-driven decisions, identify problem areas, develop improvement strategies, and cultivate partnerships to improve achievement. To date, we have offered professional learning in the month of September and October, both face-to-face and virtual, with a total of 32 participants. Schools who are unable to participate, our program specialists have created packets to, uh, share with the principals so they can give to their SAC chairs and co-chairs. Homeschool liaisons strive to keep continuous communication between our homes and school. They connect families to support school information and community resources. The homeschool liaison takes the time to learn about their families and find ways to best support them. Each homeschool liaison works closely with the guidance department and social work assistants who will shortly be known as, um, assistant attendance specialists at their school sites to provide support with attendance and other families, and other family needs. Our parent conferences, uh, also are here to provide opportunities for district parent engagements through parent conferencing, sorry. The conferences serve to communicate with parents about their child's academics and behavioral progress. The number of parent conferences offered throughout the year varies from school to school. We have piloted an academic parent conference event at seven schools for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. This replaces the traditional parent conferences with a three-tier approach. First, meeting with the parents to discuss school-wide data. Second, breaking to grade levels to discuss grade-level data. Third, discussing individual student data and strategies to help support them at home. The seven schools are Emru Shores, Fort McCoy, Lake Ware High, Oak Crest, Ocala Springs, Shady Hill, and South Ocala. They will provide the academic conferencing twice throughout this year. Now to move to Strategy 2C.
Good morning. Goal Two update, to ensure six schools' safety is a top priority at ours, at all schools. As a district, we must stay focused on providing the best and safe. As a district, we must stay focused on providing the best and safe, positive learning and working environment for our students and staff. To ensure that school safety is a top priority at our schools, we have been collaboratively, collaborating with our finance department, mental health and wellness, student service, student services, and other internal and external stakeholders to complete school hardening projects, provide best practices in the areas of prevention, and provide overall support and guidance to our schools and district staff as it relates to security. Fencing, door buzzers, and camera projects are all ahead of schedule or previously projected timelines. Currently, we have 47 schools completed for fencing with three more remaining, but those are either in progress or we have made plans to start fencing them in. Once the final three schools are complete, we will circle back around and go through a process of reviewing all of our campuses to make sure that we are improving on any areas that need improvement. Our door buzzer systems, as you can see on the picture here, takes pictures and photos of any incoming persons that may be visiting our schools and gives our staff an opportunity to evaluate that person before he or she is led into the school. Our cameras are also on a expedited installation process where we are installing cameras and door buzzers at an expedited rate. Once we complete the camera and, and door buzzer projects, all schools will, will, we will go back and add more cameras for greater coverage on school campuses. As you can see, this here chart basically shows our fencing and how far we've gone since we started this project, these projects in 2018. And although as an overall measure, we're only about 40%, as we move closer to the end of this school year, as we get finished with fencing and door buzzer projects, we'll be closer to that 100% goal that we're trying to achieve. The Florida Department of Education hosted the first convening of school safety specialists and mental health coordinators on October 18th, 2022. The purpose of this convening was to facilitate collaborative conversations that support the safety and mental health of students and families, as well as strengthen resiliency in our schools. The Safe Schools Department will work continuously with our Mental Health and Wellness Department to support student achievement, attendance, and their social emotional well-being. Finally, the Safe Schools Department will collaborate with all departments to develop a safety task force to support at-risk students. Meetings held, held to address the many risk behaviors that our students face on a daily basis. Alcohol, drugs, gun violence, gang affiliation, walking to and from school are all areas we must address as we move forward while trying to provide viable solutions to these problems. We must understand that our kids face a lot of challenges as they walk into it. Just for instance, walking to and from school, we've had several major injuries as well as fatalities. And so those, a lot of the things that we're doing as a Safe Schools Department may not be that physical presence that we see, door buzzers, cameras, the SROs on campus, but a lot of it is working behind the scenes to prevent the little small things from happening that's causing our, our students so much discomfort in schools. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
For strategy D of goal two is to support students and employees' social emotional well-being. There's two key activities that we're implementing to achieve this strategy. The first is ensuring the full implementation of our Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan, which at this time, we do have full implementation of that plan. And that plan is designed to provide a framework to assess and identify students in need of either behavioral or mental health challenges so that we can intervene appropriately on their behalf. We do this in a variety of ways. The first is through implementation of programs and clubs to promote and teach social skills and mental well-being for all students. Also through the implementation of multidisciplinary teams or MDT teams at each of our school sites. This team really is that group of professionals at each school location that do assess, identify students that are in need of supports and interventions. And then that, that team also monitors those interventions for success and makes adjustments as needed or referral to other professionals that it may be more appropriate for that student. And finally is the implementation of those individualized mental health services, whether that be counseling or mentoring through our school base and district staff, such as school counselors, psychologists, and social workers, or through our partnerships with our many community agencies, such as SMA Healthcare, Ocala Consulting and Prevention, Cut Different, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, et cetera. So we do partner through our Mental Health Assistance Plan with many agencies to provide either that individual or group support to our students directly. The second key activity to support this strategy is implementation of our SHINE initiative. So SHINE stands for Self-Care, Healthy Mindset, Inspire Growth, Nutrition, and Exercise. And this is an initiative to provide overall well-being strategies for employees and for students to take care of ourselves so that we can continue to take, take care of others. This is done through a variety of ways. One is through a simple monthly newsletter where we provide information. As an example, in October, the theme for, for SHINE was self-care. So in that newsletter, we simply explained what self-care is, what it does not, gave examples, provided a self-care plan, and really encouraged employees of how to provide strategies that they can utilize in their own personal lives to make sure their, their well-being is, is taken care of. We also provide to our school administrators a scope and sequence, which is basically easy to implement wellness strategies that they can implement on their campus for staff and for students. And one of the things we also have been working on this year is aligning it with other initiatives that we have in the district, such as, as Dr. Livinggood mentioned, our PBIS, our positive behavior strategies, our social emotional learning competencies, character education, soft skills, aligning those things so that it's, it's all one consistent message and it's aligning. So for example, back to our, the example of October, our, our SHINE theme was self-care. So the other competencies that kind of go along with that for our social emotional learning was self-management and our character trait was consideration. So as a principal, for example, if I'm doing an activity through morning announcements or something like that, I've got an easy way that those are all aligned and that I can teach those skills to our students on campus. And then finally, one of the, the, our, our big next step with this is working with other departments to really initiate and come up with more district-wide SHINE activities that we could really incorporate other great things that we have going on in our district, whether that's some of our employee wellness, you know, initiatives such as our exercise programs and our, and our step challenges and things like that. Working with Food Nutrition Services on some initiatives they have going, with fans, for example, in our schools, really aligning some of those things so that we can all be on the same page and incorporate that for our employee and student wellnesses district-wide. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes. Would you elaborate on the idea of the, the discipline, the, the 20% or so in the top part of the pyramid? That I think it's pretty much general knowledge or folks figure that if you have a, if you have discipline issues, that commands the classroom. And it, in a 30,000-foot evaluation, I would say that 20% can easily disrupt the other 80%. So going back to the classroom, the students' needs certainly do need to be met. But if they're taking away the opportunity to learn and the opportunity for the district to be successful, I think we might be missing the boat a little bit in that regard. The 60% failure rate in some of our baselines, I can see clearly that, that 60%, a teacher might be involved at a 60% level of his or her time and those students taken, losing 60% of their opportunity to be educated. Does that make sense? And could you elaborate on that a little bit? Like, are we, could we not make it 1%? Like, get it down, get it tight, not hold everybody's hand so much?
Yes, sir. That's certainly the goal. And, and you know, this pyramid just represents, you know, kind of the philosophy that, that we use in a lot of different areas like Dr. Livinggood said. So not only the academic piece, but behavior with attendance, with our mental health approaches, is that, like Dr. Livinggood said, a majority of our students are doing well, have the supports they need. And, and then when we get to that tier two, that's when we identify through various different means, whether it's through the discipline process with referrals, so behaviors in classroom. It, it's that targeted group of students that need that extra layer of support. And I think with our partnership under goal two, it, it's really looking at the root of, of what that concern is. So on the discipline side, for example, not just looking at the punitive side, it's bringing in the mental health side to see what the root cause is and see why that may be. A lot of this is tied together. So it could very well be not only something going on personally with that student, maybe, you know, at home or whatever the case may be, or a, a mental health struggle. It could be attendance and, and all that factors together. So I think the approach is looking more at the whole child and how we can intervene and provide supports and, and looking at the big picture of, of what's going on with that student. And I think we're getting much better at that. We're going to always have that tier three, that, that small percentage of students that, that need that intensive support. Depending on what that looks like, that could be, you know, a severe behavioral problem where there's other alternatives for that student. It could be a mental health concern where it could be a legitimate mental health crisis where we're intervening with, with counseling and outside agencies. Or it could be attendance where we're looking at a severe truant, truant student. It could be a lot of different factors. And I think that's the approach is that the goal would always be to have a full one-tier, tier-one implementation. But the reality is, is that we're always going to have students in need for a variety of reasons. We've really seen, obviously, as you all know, an increase of that as, as we have come back from COVID and a lot of our student exclusions and, and some of the mental health struggles that we're seeing with that. But we'll always kind of have, you know, this philosophy of this tiered approach because students need different levels of support. But I think the main difference that we're working on is looking at the whole child and how we can support and intervene before it gets to a crisis level or to a level that really impacts the student negatively with their future.
Okay, I, and I get that. That's on the problem child side. I get that. I'm, right now, my question, and I, I'd like you to drill down on the 80, 60 to 80% of the children who are, who now have great need and great problems, they're not getting educated. And how we get to that baseline level of failure, it, it appears to be driven by this 20% that you call needy. Like, there, there has to be a way to eliminate that 20% problem that's causing an 80% half of it fail, fail, half of it succeed. There has to be a way that we worry more about the, the kids who are losing their opportunity, being gypped out of an education by some bad performers. There has to be a way to address that, to get it down. I know when I went to school, you know, there, you could name, you could name the kids that were real troublemakers and they got dealt with. Ultimately, they went off to a reform school or something if they couldn't get their act together. But in our class, we were, we were functioning. We always functioned and we didn't get to the point. I would like to know what your opinion is on what happens in a classroom, what a teacher is facing when they have this 20% acting out, stealing, if you will, the educational opportunity for the, for the rest of the students. If, if you could just elaborate on that or draw a picture around it, it, it would be very helpful to this board member.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood.
Thank you. So there are many interventions that take place in the classroom. So I want to go back to, because you've said a couple of things. So let's go back to the classroom interventions that take place. So we're just looking at tier one. Say if a student is misbehaving and not following the rules. There's a few steps they take. The first step is an easy one, a conversation that you'll have with a student, like we've done for years. And we just speak to that child to say, hey, today you're going to sit in this chair instead of this chair. We're going to work through this lesson. If that behavior continues, then we look at possibly moving to a different classroom for the day, just a little timeout period for 15 minutes to go to a different classroom. And then if that behavior continues for the day, we know that we need to make contact with that parent. And so then a teacher will call a parent and say, hey, I'm really needing some support today because your student, for whatever reason, just was really distracted or distract, you know, disrespectful. I need your help. Our hope is at that point that that's the intervention and then the parent's going to be able to work with the child and then the child comes back the next day and they behave. That's our goal. If that student has that intervention with the parent and then they come back and they are still disruptive or disrespectful or disrupting the other students during the learning process, that's when we move to, okay, possibly there might need to be a discipline referral. And that's because it's a violation of the code of student conduct. So that's when the discipline team works through their interventions, which might be, okay, to, you're going to have an ISS, which is in-school suspension. And then we start with a progressive discipline plan from there. But we do remove those disruptive students from the classroom. After we've given that parent the opportunity to do, or parent or guardian to have that intervention time, we don't allow those students to remain in the classroom because you're right, we need to make sure that instruction's taking place and the teacher is free of disruptions.
Do you feel the teachers have the power? They feel empowered to make all that happen and to, and just on a daily basis, not get completely sidetracked?
Right.
Do, do they have the power to do that, to get that done?
Yes, sir. We, we make a point that we don't want, as a discipline team from, at a school level, we don't want to take the power away from the teachers. We make that very clear. Principals emphasize that. The power is that classroom teacher. Because as soon as a dean is called to a classroom, we know that we just took the power away from the teacher. So the teachers have all of these magic tool, like, all these tools in their toolbox, we say. They have different, there's a 100 different methods. And that's when I mentioned the Kagan Strategies. That's exactly what the Kagan Strategies teach the deans and the student and the teachers. They have different methods to handle situations. And so the teachers do have the power in their classroom to manage their own behaviors.
Okay, super. I, I'd like to, just while I have the opportunity to give you a grade on your performance just over time, you seem to have an incredible ability to get very realistic on issues, to really get where the rubber meets the road in terms of understanding the overall goal. And I, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that outstanding quality.
Thank you, Ms. Browning. Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Okay, that will conclude. Oh, Ms. Campbell.
Sorry. Thank you. I, I kind of have a comment and a question to the, the question and response that Mr. Browning had there. I, I think that the unfortunate aspect of us having these work sessions and these conversations during the work day is because we don't get to, obviously, it's, it's, we have them because it, it fits for our schedules and all. But the unfortunate thing is we're unable to actually hear from the teachers who are in the classroom to actually help answer that question. I, I appreciate the response and I, I do think that some teachers do feel empowered and, and I think we're trying to build that culture of empowerment. But this is an opinion. I believe we're probably a little far away from actually every teacher feeling that. I, I am interested in seeing how eventually this conversation ties to the survey data, however we intend to conduct that, on the safe environment for our staff. Same thing, safe environment for our, our teachers. I, I know those in our strategic plan currently have the TBD line item because we don't really have a baseline and we, because we've never actually gauged that in a real survey or focus groups or anything like that. So I appreciate the response, Dr. Livinggood, I really do. I appreciate the question from Mr. Browning. I, I'm just, I, I think there's probably more to it than what we're hearing right now. And so I'm looking forward to getting additional information.
Sure. And I'd like to respond. We, we follow, the schools have a progressive chart, if you will, that they follow for a school level. Once a teacher has Once a teacher has gone through the interventions in the classroom, they then go to the discipline side, like us mentioned. And then there's a progressive chart that's followed. And that's why it's so important that when, that the student services teams are able to use that code of conduct to actually be consistent and firm with our consequences. Because that's when teachers feel empowered, when they have completed all of their interventions in the classroom and they have moved forward saying like, okay, I need some assistance. That's why it's important that we're consistent with following that code of conduct.
So is there anything from the school level, and this may be a question that we shouldn't necessarily delve into today, I'm, I'm going to preface my question with that. Is there any kind of, I want to say penalty for schools that potentially have more, obviously, we have a, we have a number here we're trying to hit. We want to have fewer alternative placements, fewer expulsions. But, but are schools then also looking at it and almost penalized in a way for the number of referrals they might have or the number of, of, of alternative placements they, they have per school? And then that impacts them some way? So then, but again, it's a trickle-down effect. So then maybe the teacher does send the student to the principal and it, or the assistant, student services manager, excuse me, and used to be the dean. And, and sends, and, but the, the process actually, because it negatively impacts the school, may not be working the way we would like for it to.
We review that data. We, we definitely see the numbers and we know which schools have a higher percentage rate for expulsions or alternative placements. But our goal is not to have a flat number at every single school. There's different needs at different schools. Our goal is to keep all of the students inside the classroom for that instruction. And so some schools might look differently. So that number should not be a reflection of poor management or poor leadership on a school.
Okay. I, I think that answered my question.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question, Dr. Reese. I'm sorry. You have any questions, Ms. King, Ms. Thor?
I don't really have a question. It was more of a comment, that's something that just kind of stuck with me. And it was, when, that, when you mentioned that when a teacher calls a dean, you're taking the power away from the teacher. And I understand that to a degree, but when the teacher is calling you, and, and I don't, there could be different scenarios all the time. Like, maybe they don't, maybe they're a new teacher and they don't have classroom management. Maybe they're a really good teacher and have really good classroom management skills and usually can keep things low. But when they finally need that assistance, it kind of concerns me a little bit when I hear like, you're taking the power away from a teacher. Because to me, that looks like, I don't know the proper word, like, well, we're just going to keep that problem, that discipline issue or whatever's going on in there rather than appropriately addressing it. Does that make sense? Because, and, and Mr. Browning is kind of correct on the sense, like, it, it could take one student in a class of 20 or two, and the whole dynamics of that classroom changes. And then the instructional times and the, and the academics are not being taught and instructed for the one or two. And so I am kind of curious, like, you know, and probably for the future board and maybe, you know, incoming board members, just to pay attention to make sure that's really being resolved and just not sweeping things under the rug, you know? Or here, the teacher has the power. Believe, believe me, you know, if I was calling a dean, it was because I didn't have any more ideas, that I didn't have the power, maybe the student had the power at that point? And that kind of seemed like that to me too, you know? If the students aren't getting any consequences to what's happening, well, really, who has the power? Right? The student? I mean, and the teacher, how much power can they really have? You know, really, truthfully? So I just heard that, it kind of just stuck out to me a little bit, maybe kind of like coined, like, just like a phrase, like, you know, like it's catchy or something, we're just going to do that. But is that really what's happening? And that's just my concern.
Ms. Thor?
Thank you. And, and thank you for the presentation. And, and yes, we are a bit stuck in a, in a circular system. Forty percent, 47% of third graders in the whole state of Florida aren't reading on grade level. Yet, we are dinged badly when our school grades and our district grade is low. So it would make sense that any instructional leader is going to do anything they can to try to keep that kid's rear end in a seat in the classroom, learning. Because when they're pulled out of a classroom and they miss instruction, that reflects directly on what is likely a fantastic teacher's salary and value, VAM, value-added model. So when a student, for, the reasons are as endless and individualized as the students themselves, you call home and say, junior is, just can't focus, cursing every other minute, you know, what is going on? Parent, oh my goodness, I was late for work today, I didn't give him his meds. Common issue. Well, then where does the problem solving begin? And, and what I'm leading to, what an incredible team effort it takes these days to get the kids to a level of education that we are demanding. And it's something that I think everyone needs to know, because even our grading system is messed up. As a parent, if I was sending my kid to an A school, I would automatically assume then at least 90% of the kids are reading on grade level and math, you know, those, those basic, that's not even true. It's not even true. So I, I do understand why there is a lot of hesitancy to have a student not be in class. However, the question then becomes, if their behavior is that challenging, how much are, is that student really learning that's causing the issues? And then how much is the rest of the class?
The other students.
Able to really learn? So it takes me back to the level of, of teamwork and support and professionalism and acknowledgement that it takes. Because the example I just described becomes a medical issue, school nurse issue. I can't tell you how many parents that when they became trusting enough to even share that their child is on medication, no judgment, it's just facts, how relieved they were when the school said, well, if they're getting morning meds, and usually there's an hour window either way, and they're arriving at 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM, is that still within the doctor's medical window? They could have that med at school. Our nurses do that. We, our nurses are testing for diabetes, all kinds of stuff. So just that one little intervention can make a world of difference in that individual student's case.
And we've looked at student schedules, exactly, to, to identify that need. If we notice a certain pattern of behavior at a certain time, that's when we look at adjusting a student's day.
Yes.
So that's a very good point.
Yes. But, but leaving, i- i- it can't begin and end with anybody anymore because it's much bigger than that. And so it's, it's my hope and continued prayer that our, our very highly qualified, been there, done that, veteran teachers, there's so much that they have, that they do in their classroom and, and no one can even imagine how they're accomplishing everything that they do. But we have a very new cadre of, of teachers coming in and a lot of very new instructional leaders as, as well. You know, we're shifting as a district. A lot of our people that have been around a long time are retiring. So we are at a bit of a crossroads. You know, while we have to acknowledge what we're required and how that makes us look, so to speak, we also then have to work so hard together to acknowledge and, and problem solve the day-to-day. And, you know, we can all sit up here and be like, well, you know, this is failure and this is this and this is that. But, you know, things happen for a reason. So I, I just wanted to put that out there. And, you know, with this tier one, tier two and tier three, you get really solid at, at the tier one level, you're going to have at least 80% of the kids doing what they need to do to be successful. If your tier three is getting anywhere above 1 to 3%, then in my view, that circles you right back around to tier one. You know, what are we doing at that foundational level to really help guide and support the people that are in the trenches with these kids that come to us, ready to learn and far accelerated, to have never been out of the forest, literally?
Literally, yes.
So thank you for continuing to do everything that you do. And that extends to the whole team that presented.
Thank you, Ms. Thor.
And thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Rowan.
Yes. And, and I think this kind of dialogue from your board empowers you, doing the job you all are trying to do, attempting to do, to get out of a failure zone. It really does. Some of the things I'm hearing are very heartening. I think we're way too tolerant. I think we're, we, we tend, as a society, to blame the parents and the kids, what we're getting into our schools. Well, if you look at that, that, those kids, those students and their parents are our kids, okay? That means we, us, uniformed Sierra, we failed. We are to blame. And so we can't blame the result of our errant attempt. If we are really, if really, if that's the case and society has gotten so bad that 80% have to deal, live through the chafe of 20% bad behavior, then we've got to address that. We've got to be outraged over that. We've got to get with our, our, say, timeout with our, our Department of Education, our governor, our legislators. And I know all of them want that kind of feedback where we just don't tolerate it. And I think it comes, that's what I've heard from teachers, that they just can't perform if all this is going on and they have to, if spend half the time getting up supplies, half the time getting things up onto the top of the desk, half the time putting things away, half the time dealing with bad behavior, half the time, like that, well, wait a minute, half the time, half the time, half the time, pretty soon, you've blown the week. And, and we, we can do better. Truancy, we're way too soft, way too soft. So you certainly have my support, and I think the rest of the boards. When we go and we start and we, we deal with excessive truancy, I'm sorry. Excessive truancy is so far gone. It's like a race car driver that didn't show up or a teacher that didn't show up. Excess, no, I'm sorry, that's just goodbye. We, we, what we're using for a solution doesn't work. My effort is, is, was referred to earlier of throwing somebody under the bus. No, I'm trying to empower you all to say, hey, I can't do magic. I, I live in a real world and we can't be meeting the needs of the bank robbers to kind of straighten them out. We've got to deal maybe with security to run a proper bank that's safe and secure and operational. But because if we constantly have a problem going on at a 20% level, you all can't do your job. You're just going to come up looking like you're 50% failures. So any, any thoughts you have on that, I would bring it up, bring it to the superintendent, bring it to the board, get out here and have these discussions. Because the discussions are being had outside of this arena, out in the community. And the, the community is the final judge. It really is. And it is not other counties, it isn't all that. Yeah, if they want to tolerate something, that's, that's on them. But I think we can do a, an, an A-level job. I know truancy, our judge department, judge omens, I say it's an, they have an A. They, they get an A. They are dealing with it. I just don't want it to be that stale by the time they get it. I want everybody to kind of know, you're, we have truancy laws, they will back them first day, second day, third day, that's it. That's about as far as you can go. I know that was the way for us. I don't know if there's anything's changed that's, would even give any semblance of reason to something worse than that. And just boom, you just do it, you just say it, that's the way it is. And, and then grind down on it. But if we just are meeting the needs of the bank robber, well, maybe he's poor and maybe he needs money, shut up, forget it, just forget it. Let's corral them, let's get tough. Anybody robs a bank, they're going to the huskow, that kind of a thing.
On the November 17th board work session agenda, we will provide a presentation on attendance. So that is part of the agenda.
Well, thank you.
Dr. Livinggood, thank you guys for what Student Services does.
Thank you.
On a daily basis. I, you know, I communicate directly with you on a lot of the things in regards to Student Services. We, we, we have discipline, discipline problems around the county, around our district. And I, I, I have to commend our staff for what they're trying to do on a daily basis in trying to teach and, and corral at the same time. And it's a difficult task, even more so, the discipline is not just an issue in the classroom, it's on the buses, it's, it's like the bus stops, it's all over. So it has to be, our community has to take some team approaches to this, team responsibilities. It's not the schools, the school can't be accountable for all of this. A lot of this stuff has to be dealt with from the parent level, from the community level as well. For some reason, when I look at these, this, I look at this, this pyramid and I think about, you know, it's a small percentage that requires the intensive, but that small percentage is doing a lot of damage and creating a lot of havoc around the district. So I'm, I'm looking at ways to, to work with you all on how we could come up with some, some problem-solving solutions. Our, our disciplinary staff, I, I want to encourage all of us that can and will and want to, to, maybe we need to shadow some of these student service managers on a day, you know? Try going over to Fort King for a day or going to Lake Worth Middle School for a day and, and see that, you know, this caseload of disciplinary actions is just stacking, stacking higher because it's, it's one thing after another after another. They're going from one, it's almost as if they are, are firemen, they're trying to keep, constantly trying to put out fires. They're moving so rapidly from one, so before they can get one resolved, there's another one jumped off. And, and it's not just like that, it's, it's all over, it's all over. So we really have to come together, figure out a, a better team approach with how we're dealing with discipline. Because the goal is not to put them out of the classroom, the goal is to keep them into, in the classroom. But parents have to understand that when other parents are sending their kids to school to get educated and to not have to deal with your kids' behaviors. And, and it's unfortunate, it's really unfortunate when we're seeing this all the time. So I commend you guys for that, for what you're doing every day. And to all of our, our, our student services managers, APDs and all that are out there, you guys, I, I honestly don't know how you get it done. I know many of you stay late and work to eight o'clock at night trying to get these packets and all those things done. And so that's why I encourage our board to, to, to look into those things in depth. When they come before us, let's look at them in depth, let's support what we can support. All I've ever asked is, if you do it right, I'm, I'm with you. If you do it wrong, I'm, you know how I am. So, but let's make sure we do it, what we need to be doing. So thank you guys for that. My question for Dr. Reese is, and it's a pretty simple question, it's dealing with the parent engagement, things that we're doing around the county. One of the issues I saw with them, I've been to several, is that when they were going on, I, I'm one of those people that, that's trying to see, are we helping the situation as a whole district? Are we helping the situation? So I would ride around, I would leave the engagement and I would go in the nearby area to the schools within the proximity of that area to see, was there buy-in from those schools? Many times what I found out, those schools didn't even have it on their marquee. And, and to me, that's a problem. Because how can we engage these parents if? if the feeder schools to those schools, Dr. Gullett, what I'm talking about, if they're not advertising that we got some community engagement going on here in your locale? But, and this is, is not just specifically to high school. This is for elementary all the way up. So, I think we have to, we have to get that buy-in from these other principals and, and saying, even though it's not at your physical location, you have to support this. And not just two days before the event. It has to be, it has to be, it has to be a monumental push because what you're offering in the parent engagements are, is valuable, valuable information, valuable resources, but I'm not seeing the, the buy-in from, are you getting what I'm saying, Dr. Reese?
Yes, I absolutely do. And we're working with Mrs. Debit Department with marketing because she helps assist in the marketing of our parent partnerships. I also personally reach out to schools and ask, and ask that same question. Can you please get this on your marquees? All I can do is ask because it is very important and it's not just for a particular school, although they're housed at different locations within our high schools, but the information is, is district-wide and it is very valuable information that is being presented.
Thank you.
So, we're working hard on that marketing piece to make, to try to ensure that we get more families to know about it and to come out to see what is happening at those events.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say that because I'm thinking if it's at, if we're doing something at Lake Worth Middle School, then there should be on the marquee at Stanton. There should be on the marquee at Harborview. There should be on the marquee at the high school, the Emerald Shore. It should be on that marquee because it's in that area. And they, it shouldn't be an afterthought. It should be that they know, hey, this, this parent engagement has come to the area. We need to be, if, if, if we want our, if we want this thing to be district riding and for folks to get better. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Any, any, any public comment concerning this presentation? Thank you.
Chair, I, I still have a question.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry.
Yes. This for Mr. McFadden. Sir, I know you gave a, a presentation a couple of months ago or maybe three or four months ago, but, and that extended out, I'm, I'm just going from memory, nine months or so, something like that, into 2024, 2025 in terms of accomplishing long-term full accomplishment. Are we still sort of in that with the door buzzers, cameras? I, at the time, or, or what's holding us up on the door buzzers and the cameras?
Actually, we're moving, we're way ahead of schedule. We, initially, we had this here scheduled out to about twenty-five, 2025. But at our current pace, we should have all schools, fences, door buzzers and cameras should be completed and installed within about, we're just guessing here, but it's closer, it'll be closer to twelve to eighteen months rather than three or four years.
Okay. So, I, I would just make this recommendation from my district point of view. And that is twenty schools without door buzzers. Seventeen schools without cameras. Just make it happen. I think we could have this. After your last presentation, I, I approached the superintendent and asked her, just make it happen with the cameras and send me the bill. There's no reason why you couldn't go fill. And I've, I've talked to some people at Sheriff's Department. They, you can get cameras. I mean, they're available. You can get a door buzzer even if it is one that you may replace later, say, two years from now. There is no reason that this time next week, we, we have installers, we have cameras, we have Wi-Fi systems, we have Bluetooth systems. There's absolutely no reason that I'm willing to accept that we don't make that twenty schools zero and cameras before the end of the week. And I'll even go with you if you, if you need some authority with you. I'll, I'll go with you. Just fill the shopping cart at Best Buy and you can have the cameras. You can have all that to function in the next. And I, maybe you don't have the authority for it or something. I don't know. This isn't criticism of you. I'm just saying, I think we can empower you to, to light that candle and make it work in a week.
Mr. McFadden, Mr. McFad, Mr. McFadden, Mr. McFadden. There is, there is processes for you to purchase things. There are vendor applications that you have to go through to make purchases. There are bids that have to be submitted as well that have to go through legal with, am I correct, Attorney Powers?
Yes.
Before, you, you can't just go to Best Buy and buy a camera and put it in a school. So, I do want to make that correction. And also, we also do understand, because I've asked the same question, Mr. Browning. We also understand there are some supply chain issues. Am I correct, Mr. McFadden?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, so we are ahead of the schedule with this, Mr. Browning. And, and so, for him to, for you to suggest that he has the ability, and I'm, I'm so thankful, if I heard you right, you said you were willing to pay for it. So, I'm so grateful that you're willing to donate the money to pay for all this. And I'm, I'm hoping that the superintendent will get with you so that you will pay for this since you're willing to do it. But, but I'm, 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 I'm understanding that Mr. McFadden has to work still within the constraints and policies and procedures of this school district to purchase these things so that we will be in compliance with the state because the state Safe Schools Department still has, has us under their purview. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. And what we did to, to help with the security at the schools, we did go out and purchase door buzzers, the regular, not door buzzers, but door bells. And the schools are keeping those doors locked. They may have to get up and down to allow access into the schools for those schools that doesn't have the actual electronic door buzzers. But we're still looking at safety and we're implementing other procedures to keep those doors locked and allow access. But it, it will be through a physical getting up, letting someone into the building rather than the door buzzer because we don't have the ability to go out and install them in a week or so. It's just not possible.
Well, I, I would just say it is possible. The schedule is the problem. And the tolerance that we would tolerate this time to go by with seventeen schools lacking cameras. I don't even like to say that publicly. So, this needs to happen and we've had.
Mr. Browning?
Yes, sir.
In support of what you're saying there, but I, I think that based on the security issues, what I can tell you, and I think Mr. McFadden can correct me if I'm wrong, and this may also answer part of your questions. There is a, there is a reallocation and redeployment of a number of systems to make them further secure. And in the interim, steps have been taken in order to ensure initial security. But, for example, and this is a broad example, there may be particular areas and particular places that have a low-resolution camera, that don't have the ideal way, angle of view, things like that. And those would be upgraded to the next level. In addition, as Mr. McFadden pointed out, the things of where, where a door is now just flat remaining locked and people have to get up and go to it as opposed to having a door buzzer sort of scenario. A lot of what he's discussing here, I don't want to give anyone the false impression that there's a lack of security. It's more of a matter of an upgraded and redeployment, reallocation of resources for most of these areas. And part of the job of the school system is to make sure that all is secure first and then to upgrade the security to the maximum level we can within the identified target ranges that, that the board has previously approved. So, I think that may allay some of what you're.
That does. That helps. That helps. And I would say then, that's, that's my number-one concern is that we don't have the security in place. The second concern is that we're advertising a big gap. I don't advertise a gap, especially if there is no gap. If that door is secure, then there's no need for a buzzer. That's just an extra maintenance item that can be handled later from a, from a security point of view. I do not, I do not advertise or wouldn't ever advertise a deficiency in a, in a Marine Corps base, for example. If you're, if we're going to secure the main gate, we secure the main gate. We don't advertise that, that we have seventeen schools that don't, that don't meet it up, that don't meet security. So, I, I'm, I'm just intolerant of that. So, and as far as following procedures, it doesn't take months to, to, to secure an item. And if we have secured an item that we do not want to take out, say, ten years, that might be the life of a camera, that it's a two-year while we secure the other, the other, maybe a four, a four-K type image, then this twenty needs to be zero. It needs to be zero deficiencies. And on, on cameras, door buzzers and cameras, we can have doorbells, we can have buzzers, we can have cameras in them. It's, it's absolutely functional in, in today's world. So, to the attorney's point, that's exactly what I'm looking for is we are one hundred percent. And we've had several years to get to one hundred percent. And I think I hear you saying we are at a hundred percent and that we will update some of these items as we go along, almost like a maintenance. Is that somewhat a correct statement? Or, or is it, as it appears here, that we actually don't have the cameras?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to stand here and say we got cameras in every school. We, we do not have cameras in every school. However, from a Safe Schools Department standpoint, working with other stakeholders within the district, we are moving towards to point to where we'll be one hundred percent. We say camera and door buzzer in all of our schools. We're not there yet. And, and I can't say that we are. However, like Mr. Powers said, there are some schools with cameras that we're, we're just going back and doing upgrades on to make better coverage, more coverage areas that may have not necessarily been picked up or in the cameras were installed for initially. So, we are moving towards that. The team that we've got here within the district are working every day. We're talking. We're having meetings. We're going out to schools. We're walking, walking campuses. We're doing a lot of preventive measures. We're talking with mental health. Again, physical security is right there in our face. It's things that we can see. But there are so many other things that behind the scenes that we are doing, that this district is doing to make sure that our schools are safe. We can't, there's, there's, there's no magic that you can put together to stop anybody with the wrong mindset from doing anything they want to. We have people on a daily basis trying to rob banks. Just a mentality of people wanting to do bad things is why we have taken these extra steps to make sure that we're not just talking physical security, but our kids are telling us things. They're reporting things. We're sending messages out to our community, our local law enforcement, our SROs on campus, you name it. We, we're running a gamut of trying to put everything together to make sure that we don't have something happen in our county that may have happened somewhere else. Okay? So, we're, we're making that happen on a daily basis and, and we're just getting it done.
Yes, sir. That's the threat. I get that. And, and that's, hence we have Safe Schools. We have the program. It's the seventeen cameras for this district board member. I want the seventeen cameras. I want that expedited. Go to the superintendent and get, get whatever obstacle is in your way so that you can report. And I, I would like to see if you can say it right now that we actually do have, that we have met the goal or we will meet the goal by week's end.
Mr. McFadden.
Just, just make it happen. Just make it happen.
Mr. McFadden, Mr. Browning has gave you a request. It is noted in the record. You do not have to answer that question. That's, you're not, no, no staff member is going to become, is going to come before us in a presentation and be put on the spotlight that. That's not, that's not what we do. That's not what we do. So, he's made the request. It is noted. The superintendent notes it. And Superintendent, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board and, and Mr. McFadden can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that of those, those seventeen schools, we already have cabling and wiring in process.
Yes, ma'am. So, what we do is our technology, our tech services facilities, they go out and they, they prep the schools for the installation of the cameras. So, when the cameras get here, all they do is go back out and install them. Same thing with door buzzers. So, because the door buzzers and the cameras work together collaboratively, when they go in there to install one system, they automatically do the wiring and the hardware, the infrastructure for the next system. And this allows us, as soon as the hardware, the material comes in, we go out and we take care of it right then. So, it's not like it's not constantly being worked on and, and built upon like Dr. Gullett said.
Thank you. So, as soon as the equipment arrives, it's ready to go, the work's already underway. Thank you.
And I, I appreciate that, Superintendent. The, and, and I know you all, this, this is not an attack on, on you, Mr. McFadden. It's a, an attack on the lack of cameras that has to be, it has to be rectified. This board member has no tolerance for months going by. And, and Wi-Fi is one of the solutions because safety is paramount. That's it. And when that, we, we talk often about the grand jury convening down south, it was mismanagement. And the question of this board member, I am not going to mismanage something when I have the authority to say this has to be safe. We can use Wi-Fi until we hook those up. We can use, there, there are a number of ways that can be, where you can tackle it. And the money is insignificant from, from a camera point of view. The number, the money is there, available. Workers are there, available. I guarantee you, we can nail it. And I know you're frustrated with the inability to make all of these one hundred percent secure in a staged basis. So, I'm just telling you, I have my support to get with the superintendent and I think the rest of the board's support, to get with the superintendent and expedite the situation just as, as quickly as you can. I want to even assume it's done now. And some, as the attorney was indicating, so that nobody thinks that we're not one hundred percent safe. Yes, we'll be more safe further on. And yes, there are threats out there. That's, hence we have that's, that Safe Schools system statewide. But we will do our part to be, if, if you come walking to a school, I, I'll just tell you, right now, you're under surveillance. That's, that has to be the case. So, I'm assuming it is the case. If it isn't the case, I'm asking the superintendent to make it the case before the sun goes down very many times. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden. Any public comment? Thank you. Mr. Ayers?
School choice and magnet programs.
We take a quick break.
You need a break. Okay, Mr. Ayers, before you come, we're going to take a, a brief recess break. Let's say ten minutes. Ten minutes. We reconvene at eleven thirty-seven.
We're reconvening at 11:49 a.m. We're going to continue with our administrative briefing and work session with our school choice and magnitude program, Stephen Ayers, proposed Southwest localized rezoning timeline. Mr. Ayers, thank you for coming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board chair, Madam Co-chair, board members, Dr. Gullett, Ms. Martinez Lopez, Attorney Powers. I'm here today to present a timeline for some discussion that we're having on proposed Southwest localized rezoning. District rezoning requires rulemaking and rule development, so we have to develop a timeline for that. We're going to come back on December 15th work session and present to the board initial plans for proposed rezoning for the Southwest area. During January and February, after that work session, we will conduct community meetings and school-based meetings to discuss the proposed changes, and then a second work session will be scheduled to present the proposed plans and stakeholder input to the board. A public hearing and vote are required, and those dates will be established once the new calendar for the board gets developed. This timeline has been developed with the consideration of school staffing timeline requirements and student-parent notification requirements. Also, when we talk about redistricting or rezoning, there's the Marion County School District, which is Marion County School District, and we have school attendance zones. Sometimes the terms are used interchangeably for what we're talking about, either redistricting or rezoning. I just want to make clear what we're talking about, whether it's redistricting is used or rezoning is used, is school attendance boundaries within the Marion County Public School District. Are there any questions to the proposed timeline?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
Real quick. So, anything that comes out of all of this, I'm just saying this, I already know the answer. This does not take, this does not affect the current school year.
No, so this would be established for the 23-24 school year.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The proposed timeline, we have the January, February community meetings, we're assuming a work session potentially in March, maybe-ish. I know we're not given definite dates, but...
It's hard to say right now until we have the reorganization meeting with the meeting planned.
Right.
But our goal, because when we take the timeline into consideration, it's school staffing plans.
Right.
Have to be considered, and so we want to make sure we have it set, so that general timeframe is correct.
Okay. So, public hearing probably in March-ish, early April sometime, okay. And this, I'm sorry. And this, obviously, is one of many strategies.
Correct.
That we know that we are working on the interlocal agreement with the county and the city. We know that there are other processes in place that we are going to have to do. This is certainly one that the school district can work on, on our side of this issue. We know that we continue to have Southwest development that is increasing and continues to be a topic of conversation among our local municipalities. So, this is our step in the process to try to ensure that we're doing everything we can ahead of asking for any impact fees, anything beyond that. So, I'm grateful we're having this conversation, and thank you for the timeline.
Thank you. Ms. Thor.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Ms. Ayers. Regarding these attendance boundaries, are we thinking in terms of looking at having these take effect if we approve them for starting next school year?
Yes, ma'am, next August.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then also too, yes, Vice Chair Campbell, I agree with you that this is the part of the beginning of what we can do as a school board to help relieve the localized overcrowding. We've had this conversation before, a couple of years ago, and we weren't gaining a whole lot from that, but there's always new ways to think things through and new opportunities. So, looking forward to the conversation, because the impact fee study, which has not been updated since 2006, this might end up dovetailing quite nicely, because we're hoping that we're going to have the results of that March-ish, I think.
I think it was March.
Yes, March is the expected date of return of that.
Okay. It's going to be an exciting spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yes. Ms. Ayers, I appreciate you, and I'd like you to expound a little bit, or expand and speak a little bit to this, school attendance boundaries. Because what I'm getting is, in calls, wait a minute, are they, planning and zoning hasn't seen this, that there's a blending of terms with municipalities and school, school attendance. So, I would say that to get everybody on the same page, that proposed school attendance boundaries is exactly the way to describe it, or something else, but that doesn't go to planning and zoning and land use. Because that's the normal use, when someone says, "School zoning map," or a zone, current zone map, "school zone," it's like land use. So, I would encourage you to really go toward that school attendance boundaries that you suggested. I really think you've accomplished something there. The, do we have maps right now of the current and the proposed?
We have maps of the current. They're all posted on our website for the individual schools. You can look up those boundaries.
Okay. Do we have them printed?
They're not printed, sir, they're didn't.
Yes. If you could go ahead and print this, Board Member One, I would appreciate it.
Let me, Ms. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Are you asking him to print you a map, a zone map for each school? Is that what you're asking? Or are you asking him to print you a map for the district?
No, our boundary map, our school attendant boundaries, which is what he was addressing. So, if you would do that, I'd appreciate it. And this is a...
Are you hearing that, Ms. Ayers?
Yes, sir.
What he's asking for? You hear what he's asking for?
I believe so. What I will provide the board member, and I'll provide for all the board members at the same time, is a copy of the elementary zone boundary maps, a copy of the middle school zone boundary maps, and a copy of the high school zone boundary.
Thank you.
Excellent, sir. And that'll be a big help. And then if we, I love your, as I say, your school attendance boundaries, that's a home run in terms of communicating this. Because that's, then people are focused on the right thing, and you don't get bogged down into general land use, like preservation areas, because there's an awful lot of action going on in the county as to where things can be developed and the route that it takes for approval. So, it'll bypass all of that, all of those issues. So, I like these things to be as successful as they can be, and this one certainly will improve some scenarios in terms of providing school capacity where we want school capacity. Thank you, sir.
Any comments, Board?
I'm just going to say, I'm glad to see that you guys are thinking about this ahead of time. I know these can take a lot of time and a lot of consideration and creativity in these times with our county growing and expanding as much as it has, so thank you.
Superintendent, anything?
I would, Chair, members of the Board, are we going to finish past this, or is this overall?
I'm good. Any public comment?
Okay.
Any public comment for Mr. Ayers? Thank you, Ms. Ayers.
Thank you.
Let me give Elena, any word coming to you? Elena, any, we're on board, comments and concerns? Elena, anything? Attorney Powers?
I'm checking something else, checking something right this minute. I do not, I don't have anything at this moment. If there's anything else, I'll alert the Board.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Board, just a few items. I appreciate the dialogue and feedback to my team today. I want to start by saying this very clearly, our challenges are real. Our challenges are real. The teachers that are teaching today are teaching, facing challenges I didn't face when I began teaching in this career. Those are both academic and behavioral, and I think it has been exacerbated, or, sorry, it's been expanded upon based on the pandemic. We've seen that, I hear that nearly every visit I'm in a school, I hear and see that. So, I just want to acknowledge that. And we don't make excuses. One of the things I'm most proud of, of this county and our employees, is that we don't make excuses, but we persevere, but we have to work through them and acknowledge that those are real. With that said, our five-year strategic plan, and why we keep bringing this forward and doing updates, because it's important that we understand that it's not something that is a document that sits on a shelf, it's a pathway, it's a high-level pathway, so that we can ensure that all of the goals and strategies drill down to the finite level, child by child, to accelerate and improve our outcomes for students. So, you have to build a pathway forward, so everyone knows how we're working together and collaboratively, to be diligent in reaching and improving our outcomes and reaching every student. I also want to mention again, and I know we've said this several times over the last few years, is that it's fluid and flexible. That is why we bring it forward, that is why we talk about it. We've made adaptations already after a year and a half, and we will continue to do so, not only things that happen locally, but happen at the state level. And so, we are very mindful of the needs that are there, and they're great, but we also have a lot of great opportunity, and we want to provide strong choices for every student. And that process begins in the earliest grade, so thank you for your support of our early learning, which I think will have, I really do think it will have a tremendous impact on our district over the years to come. You can't see that immediately, but we will see an improvement over time, and I think that will be sustained over time. So, and the last point I want to make is regarding what we talk about in our Tier One instruction. You heard it in Goal One, and you heard it in Goal Two. There is no surprise, and it's not left by chance, that if you go back to Slide Four in our first presentation today, Goal One, Strategy A, the very first strategy, is about Tier One instruction. In other words, foundational skills for every student. I am proud of the fact that public education serves every student, every student regardless of their needs, regardless of whether they are highly gifted and have needs that come from that, or have some exceptional student education needs that require a lot of additional materials and resources. We serve every child proudly. And so, Tier One talks about foundational knowledge, literacy, mathematics, science, social studies, and it is through our very deliberate effort in looking at those foundational skills that we will see improvement in Marion County. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is very enlightening today, and I appreciate the superintendent's comments. I believe the plan going forward is brilliant. I believe that where we are right now in the quagmire of, say, the last 10 years is horrendous. It's not anybody's fault that I can point a finger at, or even want to point a finger at, other than to establish what likely caused this situation. If we don't know what caused it, it's going to be tough implementing this program. I've had further conversation, and I believe that our, I can assure the public that our schools will have cameras, do have cameras, this is very imminent, that cameras are taking place. The installation of cameras are taking place, and that they will be updated as time goes An additional item that I have was, at the end of the last meeting, there was a question as to the likelihood of the state grand jury, and whether or not there was actual indication of a focus on Marion County. And to this, to this Board Member, this opens an area of management versus mismanagement, and it equates to, I like to use the analogy of driving a vehicle, like on I-75. There are state laws, we know there are state laws, there are state laws for this operation of this school district, federal as well. Those laws will be enforced. When they're enforced, you go down the road at about 120 down I-75, and you may get away with it a time or two, but ultimately, whether you're advised of it or not, you will feel the strength of the state enforcing the law. In other words, you'll have to stop that behavior, and all of that force, to the extent that it actually is effective, will be brought to bear. So, that's as close as I can come. There are 67, when you take all the counties, some have more than one district, but all districts are under state law and state focus, and all districts can assume that, just like on any highway, if there is mismanagement, if there is malfeasance, if there is fraud, if there is any rule-breaking of any sort, it will be dealt with, and there will be a convening of the grand jury, as it was in Broward County. That isn't a threat to the districts, it's a confidence level that the state, the districts, the students, the communities, all can feel confident that, in fact, our state, the state of Florida, has a solid hold, even though we constantly bring up how bad things are on this baseline situation, we will go toward better management, less malfeasance, and less fraud, as was found in that last grand jury. And it's great reading. Anybody that wants to, it's public record, just, you can ask the school district for it, and, or you can ask the governor for it, you can ask the grand jury. The foreman's report is very instructive. That will conclude my remarks. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Thor, then Ms. King. Ms. Thor.
Oh, me, okay. Thank you. Yes, great presentations today. You know, the whole state of Florida recognizes that it's unacceptable to only have 47% of our third graders reading on grade level. Clearly, things need to change, and the definition of insanity is continuing to do the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. So, I'm very relieved and reassured that through our strategic plan... So I'm very relieved and reassured that through our strategic plan, and also through the actions that are already being taken, that we are certainly well on the road to changing that. Change is hard. Change is exhausting. Foundational change is especially exhausting. But it's the right thing to do, and I am very confident that this district is committed to doing things the right way, for the right reasons, and that we are ultimately going to be successful. And as I sit up here as a school board member, I, at each and every meeting, am going to articulate that confidence in our district, along with my expectation. And, and that's personal, you know, to me. Each and every one of us sitting up here not only has a duty, but in my mind, we also have an obligation to do whatever we can from, from our seats to make our public school system the best that it can possibly be. So as long as I'm still sitting up here, that's going to be my goal. And with that in mind, I'm very excited to be going to Oak Crest Elementary School, which was a failed school. Happy to report no longer a failed school. In fact, they have just been, or will be getting very soon, almost $80,000 worth of school recognition money for their efforts and continued progress. And tonight is the rescheduled Night of Excellence, where the whole community is invited to celebrate. Great work, great improvement, and the beginning of a trail to even more excellence moving forward. So that's going to be a fun night tonight. I'm definitely looking forward to that. And for the rest of it, I'll just say that we're going to continue, and we will get there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Board Member King?
Yes. Speaking about the grand jury, actually, this is, when we hear that, it's not nothing, it's not new. This board and the previous board knew that when the grand jury, when they were formed, that we knew that every district in the state of Florida, at some point, will be investigated. So there's no doubt that they are looking at districts, looking at us. We welcome them to come and make their observations. But I do know that we've known that for a while. I can't remember the date. Maybe we could find out. I remember talking, actually, to Paul Gibbs about it. But if we are being investigated, as you said, we wouldn't know, we wouldn't have any idea. It's like any other investigation. But I'm confident that we are doing, you know, what we know is best. And there would never be any deliberate malfeasance on our part. I would certainly hope not. So I just wanted to address that because when you said that, actually, you said it last time, and I meant to look it up, and I forgot until you mentioned it again. And then I just have a little bit of housekeeping item for basically the board, just because I think there's a little confusion, and the only time I can speak to you guys about this is all together. And that's for the evaluations for our superintendent and our school board attorney. It just seems to be a little confusion. Maybe we need some better procedures with the timeline, what tool we're going to use, and then also who holds it. Because as we all know, people are coming and going and moving, and, you know, someone may not be here to know to give the board, or the superintendent, you know, intendants, or if they ever need to look back and find this information. We need to know where that is. So I think for a housekeeping item, I would like to see the, us or the future board kind of hone in on that a little bit. That's just my thoughts. Because here, I'm at the end of my term, and I'm trying to close things out. I was part of the board that put, you know, things together. And I just want to make sure I'm doing my due diligence before my final day. So I just wanted to clarify that. So you guys just, you know, next year can hopefully be a little bit smoother, or you guys won't be as confused as I've been the past couple months. Okay?
Has that happened?
We, I'm going to talk about it.
Not yet. Oh, you're going to speak about it? Okay.
We'll talk about it.
Okay. And that, those are my closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member King. Bye, Chair.
Thank you. I want to first say that I am grateful that we are going to have conversation about rezoning in the southwest area. I'm looking forward to that December 15th to hear what the initial plans are. I know that this board, prior to my being here, entertained some thoughts of doing some rezoning in our southwest and possibly other parts of the county. But I do want to express, I actually did ask Mr. Ayers back on, I think, August 8th, before school started, for our maps. So I have them actually in my email. And so while you're asking for them printed, I have them pulled up. So I, I do want to express, and I've said this to multiple people, even when I'm sitting in city planning and zoning, whenever they continue to hear us, yes, in Liberty's impacted, and yes, in Westport's impacted. And is this another Saddlewood one? I mean, it's kind of like a running joke whenever those developments come up before planning and zoning. I do want to say what I often say to them. While we may look at rezoning attendance boundaries, et cetera, there really are only so many places these students can go in that corridor. We have Hammont Bowen, Shady Hill, Saddlewood College Park. And the volume of students that are coming into that community, and I know that the district is starting to look at this and starting to work on the planning, but there are, there are projects like the Heathbrook community that has been vested for 20 years that they've just been sitting on land. That stuff never has to come back before planning and zoning commission. And they're about to build another several thousand homes in Heathbrook. Think about the impact that's about to have on us. So nevertheless, I know that's all a part of the conversation, and what part of that student impact generation is going to look like when we get that study conducted. But I'm, I'm just grateful we're having this conversation, because we do need to do something, at least have the conversation. If we, I think it will help us identify what actually our needs are. That's only on the elementary side. When you talk middle school side, it's Liberty. I mean, or you're, you know, maybe going out to Dun Ellen, or, I mean, and even with the high schools, then you have students right now in Marion Oaks, all the way to I-75, that are bused to Dun Ellen High School. I mean, that's our option. So while we certainly need to have the conversation, and we need to start pursuing what our options are as a district, how we can start alleviating that overcrowding potentially with moving those attendance boundaries, please, community, understand that there's only so many places they can go. And frankly, all the places I just named are already overcrowded. The only high schools that we have that are not at some level of capacity, where they're not open for open enrollment, are North Marion High School and Lake Weir High School. Every other high school is not open for controlled open enrollment. So just understand, this is going to be an interesting conversation as we continue. Also, I wanted to mention the February 2nd Student Discipline and Mental Health Work Session that was talked about today. As we're forecasting ahead, I'm grateful to hear that, that that's coming. I know a work session that's coming up, actually, in two weeks, is going to be talking significantly about attendance. Unfortunately, I will not be present for that one, as I've said previously. So this is actually my last work session to work with this board, because I will not be here on November 17th. So I've been grateful to work with you all in this capacity. But I will be at an educational leadership summit conference, actually, with some other school board members from around the state who are a part of our advocacy committee. And the final thing I actually wanted to say today, because I'm certain he's listening, I want to say, Joe Callahan, we're going to miss you. Joe Callahan has been the education reporter for the Ocala Star Banner for I don't even know how long. And as you all may have seen or gotten phone calls from him, tomorrow will be his last day with the Ocala Star Banner. And that's unfortunate. He's, he's done a great job of covering education news for the Star Banner. My hope is that there will be some level of local coverage in a weekly, or in a daily publication that we have in Marion County. I'm hopeful, but I'm not optimistic about it. So nevertheless, Joe, we're going to miss you. Thank you for all the good work that you have done through the years to ensure that education news was presented. And we're just grateful that you have been kind of like a part of the team, even though you aren't really. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, all board members, for your comments. And, and yes, we do, we do want to wish Joe well in whatever's the next move. Marion County's school board is always looking for folk to teach English and, you know, writing, how to get these kids writing well. So don't, don't, don't forget about us, Joe. But we appreciate everything that you've done for us. I do want to bring up a couple of things, and I'll be very brief in them. And this, actually, you're right, this is our last work session together, all of us together here. So I do want to go ahead and thank Ms. King and Mr. Browning for their service to this board. I hope you guys will be back for the, for the board meeting. We do want to see you here. One of the things I did want to talk about, and Ms. King brought it up, is the, the evaluation for our superintendent and our school board attorney. I don't think it's fair that a new board would come on and try to do those evaluations. So I have been working with Attorney Powers to make sure that we get this evaluation done for our superintendent and Mr. Powers, prior to this board dissolving, the way it is. Board members going off and board members coming out. We need to, you're right, there has to be some, some strict protocols on timeframes and how this thing happens. Who owns that document, or that, that, that record of how it's going to be done? There has to be some implementation of that. It's, I would, as a, as a ploy of anybody, I wouldn't want my evaluation to just kind of be running on and on and on and on. I want to know where I'm at. And I think that's a disservice to the superintendent and to our attorney. So we will have some implementations on that, and you guys will get your evaluations very, very, very shortly, because Mr. Browning and Ms. King need to weigh in on those evaluations. It's not fair for the board member elects to have to try and evaluate. That's, that's just not right. So thank you, Ms. King, for that. And hopefully, we'll be, once you get off the board, once you come off the board, maybe you can help us with some other stuff. I look forward to that. So then we can talk about it, and it won't be illegal to talk about. One of the other things that I, I have been looking at and doing a little bit of research on is we will have two new board members coming on in, in a few weeks. I have reached out to the Florida School Boards Association about master board training as well. We are going to be in a line, or we're going to be in a, in a queue, because so many other boards across the state are going to be looking to do the same thing. Looking to do the same thing. So where we're going to fall at in that queue, I don't know. But I, I am actually hoping that we'll get it sooner rather than later. But one of the things that we can do as a board is to, I guess, in the organizational meeting, or immediately after the organizational meeting, have a work session, where we do have a conversation with our new board members that are coming on, and expectations, things that they can do, how to pull policies. And I know that they have those conversations prior to getting on the board through orientation with our board services. But there are some things that they cannot discuss unless they're with us in a open forum. So I'm going to propose, Elena, that we have a work session for sometime in early December. And it's going to be kind of hard, because I know we got a lot of stuff going on, and we're going to immediately go into a conference. But after that, it's been proposed that we have a media work session with the new board members so that we can have a discussion about those things. You guys okay with that?
Do you think you guys should, like, have a retreat, kind of, like, if it's going to be a long time before you guys can actually get that master board training? I wonder if you could have, like, a little retreat or something, just to get, you know, someone that could put things together? Just something that you guys could work?
Can I laugh when I take that question?
Yeah, no, I was going to say the work retreat.
Because the last time Superintendent said retreats, she got bombarded. But I know what you're saying.
Oh, yeah. No, I didn't mean that. Do not go to the ritz, or, you know, go have your champagne and pompons and, you know, play around all day.
But yes, some type of work retreat.
Just something so you guys can kind of get to know each other without being hardcore.
Correct. Because it's going to be a rapport with, with the board. It's going to help us to understand. And I know one of our, our board members elect is here, and I'm sure the other one is listening. So it's not to teach anybody how to think or anything like that, but it's to build a rapport so that we have a board that's functioning, highly functioning board, and highly efficient board, so that we, till we get our master board training, because that is going to come. But when it comes, I don't know. Elena?
Yes, sir. I had reached out to Tina Pinkinson, once the board members were elected, and she had emailed me. And we are not looking at least until February or March
Correct.
before she's able to come and perform that master board training. So.
And I reached out to them as recently as yesterday about some stuff. And so this is one of the things that we kind of talked about. I had, I was pointing the picture and asked, would that be a good idea? And it was like, that's probably one of the best things you can do in the interim, before you get there. So, so, yes.
Do we need to coordinate dates? I mean, with the three of us that will be a part of it, or how, how do we want?
Well, I think at the, I think at the organizational meeting, we can come up with a date.
Talk about that. Okay.
And hopefully, you know, whoever the chair is at that point, you know, we, there are so many things that we have to talk about, how chairs and vice chairs are chosen, and the committee assignments, and all those types of things that, as a board, we never talk about, but we could talk about them in that work session. Am I making this?
No, that's good.
That would be good.
Okay. So, so that's, that's what we'll, Elena, you'll give us a date for that, try to work on a date with that for us. Superintendent?
Certainly. I was going to say, December 8th is available. That's the week after the conference, and the week before our scheduled work session on the 15th.
We had penciled in the interlocal meeting. We kind of had that day blocked. Let me make sure I still have it blocked.
That has been, that has been, it's just the 7th.
Right. But we originally had 7th and 8th blocked, so maybe nothing got scheduled on that day. Let me look.
I have blocked the 8th on the calendar.
Okay. So let's, let's make that happen on the 8th. And our board member, board member elects, you guys are hearing us that December, well, they'll be on the board then, so. So we're looking forward to doing that.
We'll have to call it something other than a retreat. I don't know how you could call it. And I don't know if there's somebody locally that might be able to come in and help. It'll be separate from what master board training is, because that's specific to school boards. But somebody who, I don't know, is a human resources person, or somebody who's good in culture, and that might be able to come and walk us through some exercises. I, I don't know. Just a thought. So, I mean, other than us just sitting there with no real agenda.
No, well, yeah, no, someone does need to plan it. Like, just so you guys can get to know each other and be familiar. You know, even if it's just like a lunch, just so you can talk about food, family, and fun, you know, and have a little bit of, just get to know each other, because you guys are going to have to work. But that's just me. I'm leaving.
So can I, can I tag somebody to help with that? Before, before that, I think it's so appropriate that could help do that, and it would be there. One of the final duties for exiting the board. Ms. King, could you work with our attorney and help us on that?
I mean, I would, as the, as one of the most recent board members to this board, I would have loved that early on. I think that would have really helped us with the dynamic. So I love the idea.
You know, I'm not 100% sure I could commit to that.
Just to have a phone call with the attorney.
Okay. I'll have a conversation with him.
Thank you.
Chair?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I would, my advice would be, you'll be voting on these things. Just bring it forward, have the meeting, and declare immediately, upon swearing in, that this is, in fact, a master board, and that it needs no further accreditation by outside parties, especially unelected parties. I am saying that so that everyone comes on board, and we have staff that can bring people forward. We have legal, we have superintendent, and we have board members. And they are, in fact, master board members. By this time, they're either elected, where they've won a majority of that particular vote, or they're appointed, where they won a majority, which is, be one of whoever is selected by the governor. So at that point, the more open and the more qualified that you distinguish this board and, and, and address it as a master board, that is it, because that's local, it's powerful. Everybody that's coming on this board, and everybody that's on it, is capable. And you want to be sure and go by the sunshine law. And those, those meetings, I'm still looking back, trying to find the video of the last one, when we had those people come down from the association. Those have to be videoed. You know, they have to be recorded. They have to be for the sunshine law. Record has to be set. have to be, for the sunshine law, record has to be set. And it's not to anybody's detriment, it's, it's certainly just an improvement. So, that'd be my suggestion to the board.
Thank you. I, I, I hear your, your suggestion, your recommendation. When I went to college, I, I didn't just go to any college, I went to a college that was accredited, because I wanted my degree to be accepted nationwide, wherever I went. So, for us to just, as our own entity, declare us a master board train, board, it's, I feel that it's not as recognized, if we're not going through some agency that does the accreditation of those things. So, I, I'm, I, I respect your, your, your suggestion, Mr. Browning, but I, I disagree with that part. And I don't think we, we have that authority just to declare ourselves as a master board. That, that would not be actually 100% true, to be, declare ourselves a master board, when we have two new board members in their first organizational meeting, who've never sat on the dais as a board member, to say that they are now master board, that, that would be a huge disservice to them, and I would want them to feel comfortable in their role, to be trained properly on their duties and obligations and rights as a board member. So, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to do them any harm, do their, their credentials any harm, by making that statement, that we are a master board, and when we haven't. So, so, we will set the work session up, Elena, for the 8th, and, and I'm praying and hoping everyone will be there, and I'm, I'm hoping Ms. King could give some input to our attorney on some things that we definitely need to discuss, sunshine being one of the things that we have to discuss in those sessions, so people have a great understanding, because sometimes people get on the, on the board, not understanding that the sunshine law doesn't mean that we can't be at the same event at the same time, it's, it's about having a meeting about something that we're going to vote on. And I think, I think, I, I, as I said, it's kind of funny, but I remember when Board Member Campbell came on, not to put her on the spot, but we were having lunch, and she was like, can we sit in here like this? And we were just having lunch, you know? And you, we can, and, and, but it, but that was a huge learning curve for her, and, and so, those types of things can be discussed in that organizational meeting, and so she doesn't have to feel uncomfortable, because we're having lunch together. We're not talking about, we're talking about deli sandwiches are not what we're going to vote on. So, so, I think that will just be a huge plus for those new board members coming on, and for us that are still sitting on the board. So, that's, that's just, it'll be December 8th, and immediately after, we're coming back from our, our training in Tampa. With that being said, I don't have any further comments. We're going to adjourn this meeting at 12:00. Let me do say this, please remember, this is open enrollment. If you haven't did open enrollment, your insurance things, you have to tomorrow to get it done. So, please, staff, if you haven't got it done, please get it done. All right? Meeting adjourned, 12:31 PM.